As good as time as any, let's call the meeting to order. Please stand and pledge, we're gonna do the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As always, we have two emergency exits on either side. Board of Ed would like to welcome Council Chris Powers from Ingram and Smith tonight to join us. Any correspondence that's able to be posted is posted outside on the outside table. And we are very excited to have some students tonight for our music and arts presentation, Dr. Zouar joining us. Dr. Johnson, you want to say anything?
Yes, I'd like to ask Dr. Zouar to please start the show. We're ready to go.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We're very happy tonight to present to you two little bits of our very recent Drama Club productions. The first is gonna be a video clip of the high school production that happened just last weekend, and then we're gonna have a live performance of one number from the middle school show that happened the weekend before. I just wanna say a word about our Drama Clubs. Those parents who are here from the middle school, who are here to see their children, know the Drama Club is a place where kids find a home. They belong. And it doesn't matter whether they're star actors, singers and dancers, or whether they can work the lights, the sound, or whether they're just lugging pieces of furniture on and off the stage, all the kids belong to the Drama Club. So whether it's middle school or high school, I think it's a wonderful opportunity. In this time, we talk about social emotional learning. The kids are certainly social, and they get very emotional about the show. And when it's all over at the cast party, I watch the tears, you know, the waterworks start, you know, the show is over, they miss each other until January, when the spring show starts. So I'm very pleased to be here tonight. I'll just set up a little bit of this video clip. The show is, you can take it with you. It's a 1936 play by Moss Hart and George Kaufman. If you're a movie nerd like I am, you may know the 1938 film by Frank Capra, the director, with Jimmy Stewart and Lionel Barrymore. The same actors, by the way, who were in the 1946 It's a Wonderful Life. Everybody knows It's a Wonderful Life from, you know, they show it every Christmas on TV. So Frank Capra loved certain actors to work with, and he directed them in that 1938 film. That's my sentimental favorite. But when I saw this show last weekend, they did a great job. It's a screwball comedy, that's the genre, and there's a very eccentric family. You're gonna see them, the dad or the grandpa kinda just quit business and enjoys life, and he's got a son and a daughter, somebody makes fireworks, somebody's a ballet dancer. It's an eccentric group, but there's one quote-unquote "normal" daughter who's engaged to the boss's son, and they're coming for dinner tomorrow night. I'll let it speak for itself. Tomorrow night, that's the important thing to remember.
Love is all that is left in the world, Grandpa. Yeah? Come on, you bad. Soon as Fallon will take that away too. I tell you, Grandpa.
It's so nice to get into my office again. Six syllable, right? Don't take my stuff?
Yes, indeed. You already practiced one bad, I tried to pick them up.
Why, I told you Mr. Play-Doh.
I didn't know you were working for the young P.A.
Oh, no, Don, you see, I used to read all the time, and then...
It happened again. It was a dog following me every place I went.
Nonsense, it's just your last name.
No, it's not. It happens every time I go out to deliver candy. You want to please me, Jerry? Well, it's all right for you, I'm Grandpa, but you keep following me. You! Well, you have to know what following is. You know, I had great time, you follow. I would follow, right, dog, from class to...
Of course, if you had a follow back name.
Well, maybe. What do you want, this over there? Okay.
This is, uh, has something to do with, you know, eight years?
No, it doesn't make any difference.
Yes, it's following him? Yes? Oh, yeah. My car, like, just going off, I couldn't find my silver.
Yeah, the hot point for it, the nine-five bubble, huh? But actually, don't lay a G, it's true, that's right, I said.
Well, I just wonder if Mr. Play-Doh could hear that, Grandpa? Artie, believe he was very brave now.
Yes, but he takes a little talent, wouldn't it? Only made two whole lives last night. He has to do better than that. Go ahead. We begin. Now, do it. Do it, gone, gone, you can do that in eight years now. At last, on the sun, on the sun. Oh, Grandpa, you tend not to realize, you thought me, Grandpa? He thought he liked to follow that to the end.
It's a play-doh.
Whatever you...
It's a play-doh.
It's mine, not your life.
No!
You're lying to your head.
It's a play-doh.
You're getting me to death.
It's a play-doh.
My body, we go, we go back to the era. A little bit clearer, a little bit clearer, behind the whole body, Grandpa. And... La, 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 no, it's perfectly all right. You're just making yourself an old... I mean, how can you possibly, I don't know, I think...
Tell me, tell me.
Just the most pathetic thing, oh, not at all. What if we weren't doing a thing?
No, no, it's just a quiet evening at home.
That's all. Don't say it, why? That was a funny, it's a sick one.
How do you?
Uh, Mr. Carmichael, Mr. Carmichael, Mr. Kalikoff. Oh, and Mr. Penup. Oh, don't mind my costume, I'll leave it right off. So, Mr. Penup, would you go downstairs and tell Mr. Kingmore, come right up? Tell him, Mr. Mr. Kirby, Arby.
Hey, you sure put a pen up on it.
All right. Excuse me.
Well, tell him that you're, uh, that you're out of here.
So I don't know if any of you have children my children's age, but the in-laws coming over, this is like the nightmare. Coming over on the wrong night. So now it gives me pleasure, I'm gonna introduce Michelle Yates, who does our middle school shows. She's wonderful. She's not a member of our teaching staff, but she's been with us now for six years. And she'll set up the scene we're going to see from our middle school show. Our middle school show is called Someone, and it's all about teenagers having crushes and falling in love and trying to find the right person. So Michelle, you wanna set up this song?
Sure. Hi, thank you for having us. I'm Michelle Yates. In this number, you're going to meet Kendra and Jeremy. Kendra's being played by Ava Paternostro, and Jeremy's being played by Sam Gruner. And what you missed that happened earlier in the show is that Jeremy's character, so Sam's character, has had a crush on Kendra forever. He thinks she's the most beautiful girl in school, and all he wants to do is go on a date with Kendra. And he asks a couple of his friends, Evan and Jake, if they would help him get a date with this girl that he's wanted a date for forever. So that's where we are at now, as you meet this scene. So please enjoy.
Oh, hey Jeremy. I'm sorry, are you okay?
It's okay, I'm okay. Where are you headed?
To find the girls. I'm trying to figure out some feelings.
Oh, really?
Actually, you know what? You may be the perfect person to talk to about this. Tell me what you think.
Sure.
Say there's this person you pass in the hall every day. It's in second grade, you're used to thinking about him in a certain way. The persona that he plays, and then something changes, and he changes. The guy that you'd never be into, into. The guy that you'd kind of be into. Wrong guy that you'd never be into, into. The guy that I'd kind of be into. Is he worth dancing? Jeremy, is he...
She told me about me?
Of course she is. Say there's this person that you never knew that well.
She is totally into you.
You thought that you had him pegged, but now you can tell he's gone. The guy that you'd never be into, into.
The guy that you'd kind of be into.
Into. The guy that you'd never be into.
Never be into.
The guy that I'd kind of be into.
Kind of be into.
Jeremy, is he...
Absolutely.
I don't always sleep till other people lie. Except when on the stage, and there were so many changes that I'm going, I might tell this to you. Guess there's a part of me that wants to. I guess a part of me likes to, who knew? I guess a part of me likes to talk to. I guess a part of me wants to, who knew? I guess a part of me likes to hang with you. I guess a part of me wants to, who knew? I guess a part of me likes to hang with you. I guess a part of me... The guy that I'd kind of be into. The guy that you'd kind of be into. Yeah. The guy that you'd kind of be into. In... Jake?
No! What's with Jake?
Oh, thank Kendra.
Okay, guys, so you can pile up that way, and then he can... Oh, sure, yeah.
Can I have me do this picture?
Okay.
That we've been prepared.
Thank you, Dr. Zouar.
Thanks, Brian.
Such a good job. So hard to get up in front of people and do that, so they were amazing. Okay, Dr. Pelletieri is up. We're having our staff professional development presentation.
Chris, go right ahead.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson, Mrs. Hackett, thank you. This is gonna be a fantastic presentation, by the way. About fifty minutes, but I'm gonna knock it down to about forty-five. Professional development is something that I really do enjoy talking about, it is something that is a part of the home of curriculum and instruction. And we'd like to start with this statement as a basis for our professional development. Every student deserves a great teacher. That is not by chance, but by design. And so, I wish I had said that, Doug Fisher said it, so I put his name on there. And that is something that we kinda live by here in Rockville Center. We build a system where we develop and help nurture great teachers. So our PD plan, and there's quite a bit in this presentation, I'm not gonna expect you to read every word, nor am I going to read every word to you, this will be on the website. We start with a professional development plan and a mission statement to develop students that are independent thinkers and problem solvers. We work with the school district, the PTA, the Teachers Association, the Curriculum Committee, the Board of Education. We have a plan that is in place that meets state guidelines. All of that is here on this slide. There are great many items in our plan. It includes, this one I will read, math ELA writing across the curriculum, science, mental health, social emotional learning, cybersecurity, articulation across the schools and the grades, professional learning communities, which PLC, collegial circles, IB roundtables, NYPD, mindfulness is a professional development we've been doing for the past three years, transference, where you take something in one subject area and transfer it to another subject area, trying to knock down those silos, so that kids understand that this is not just the room I do ELA, I can use the skills I learn here and use them in other areas as well. Technology integration and implementation. ENL, English as a new language for our students, special education, differentiated instruction, this is just things off the top of my head as I was putting this slide together, just amongst these. So if someone out there says, well, you forgot this or forgot that, I'll give you that one, we can maybe add that as we go forward. What's the goal, again, not a slide I'm going to read to you, but is to improve the quality of teaching and learning to meet the needs of our students. Developing 21st century skills. We use a data warehouse to look at instruction. We use pedagogical, pedagogical research. We build leadership and capacity through mentoring. All of these things are part of our program. We work with new language students, we work with our middle school, the NYPD, and again, the high school, international baccalaureate, goes on and on. New York State has their own professional development guidelines and goals. They hope that we meet the needs of the members of our school community, including administrators and support personnel. Needs to be addressed to ensure focus on continuous learning, that is something that we work with our teachers. We want our students to be lifelong learners, we want our teachers, our administrators to be that as well. And their focus is to close the achievement gap and improve achievement for all students, there's a link there, you'll write to their site if you like. This is the beginning of their site, the professional development terms, this page. Reason I show you this is this page goes on and on and on and on and on and on, and literally goes for ten more pages, but I just thought the slides were getting to be too long. But it is amazing what the state has in their professional development plan and what we are responsible for, and I'm confident to say that we meet those. One of the things the state has adopted the past few years is something called continuing teacher and learner, learning leader, continuing teacher and leader education, CTLE. Teachers must complete a hundred clock hours of CTLE professional development during a five-year period. That is done throughout, any professional development that is done during the day, if they do six-hour PD, they can count that six hours, if they do a two-hour after-school, counts that. So the state has minimum requirements for professional development for its teachers. In Rockville Center, PD is year-round and it is ongoing. It is mandated contractually for tenured teachers, guidance counselors, social workers, school psychologists, we do ten hours a year. Untenured teachers do sixteen hours, and teaching assistants also do professional development for six hours. Some of that professional development is delivered by our teacher center. It is professional development by teachers for teachers. I'm gonna talk a little bit about that research as we move forward. It is NYSED funded, which we like because they help to fund some of our professional development. A lot of it is technology-based, and we do a lot of our ENL support for professional development through the teacher center. It's a great collaboration. Right in this room, we recently had IB roundtables, this is an example. Now, this is a square, it's not a roundtable, so please don't try to get me on that, but the IB roundtables are people working together to problem-solve around issues with IB, share best practices, share ideas, and we had people from all over Long Island, right here in this room, just a couple weeks ago, working on IB roundtable. This is an example of some of the professional development we do with our ELA curriculum. Really, really proud of this, we just presented this at our PTA curriculum committee meeting the other night. We, from scratch, have been working with ELA K through five, we have a professional developer that comes in and works with us. This is curriculum writing by our teachers for our teachers. This model's a mentor text that teachers read to our students, shows a chart that the students use and teachers develop together as they start to develop their writing. This is just a piece on writing, this has taken years. Today, grade four was meeting with their colleagues, working on this professional development, working on our ELA curriculum. It is truly a living document. We have grade-level PD each year. I do that with Dr. Sempino, Jeanine, as everyone calls her, and we work with all grades K through five, we also work through the middle school, and Mr. Murphy does a lot of professional development with his APs at the high school, we provide resources for that as well, and sometimes work with them. The grade-level PD is great because it gives all the K teachers, all the grade-one teachers, all the grade-two, opportunities to sit together, share ideas, share some of the things that they're working on. We review any new curriculum that's written over the year, we discuss any new resources. This year, the EduCal, I'll give a plug for the Education Foundation, Rockville Center Education Foundation, gave us three years' worth of grant monies for a program called Mystery Science, which is a fantastic online science resource. So we review that with our teachers during grade-level professional development meetings, discuss those resources, any grade-level concerns, what have concerns? We had geckos, the geckos were dying, what do we do with the geckos? We have these live kits, it's science, so we're very concerned about what's happening, making sure, I don't have enough mealworms for my geckos, things like that. I get very interesting emails sometimes. But it's a great program, that's part of our science. Science kits change this year, we're constantly doing things with that. And we do an item analysis, and that's where I talked about the data warehouse. Our three-through-eight assessment results, go into data warehouse through NASO BOSIS, we can pull those results, we can compare ourselves to the county, we can compare ourselves to the state, we can compare ourselves within the district, we can compare ourselves against buildings, and we can compare ourselves to our colleagues in the room next door. Really important that we do that, an item analysis, we see where we have strength, we have areas of weakness that we might be able to say, hey, wow, this teacher's really hitting it out of the park with this question. Numeracy, this other teacher might be struggling, let's get them together, see how they can't work with each other. Really important. We have elementary math implementation teachers, we have two of them, that's something we may discuss during budget season, but we have two elementary math implementation teachers, they provide professional development for our teachers, they also do all of our curriculum leadership, they do AIS instruction as well, they are pulled in many directions, and they are our colleague in your class and offering advice and support as well. So they are not administrators, they're able to support the teachers, math is ever-changing, and we're lucky to have them. Just an example of a district-wide initiative, we've been doing mindfulness in the district for three years now, we began in twenty-seven, almost three years now, began in 2017. So far, we've trained over 290 staff, a total of over forty hours, we've had two-day-long summer retreats, we've had a parent night. This is an example of something that we do, professional development should not be a one-shot, should not be someone flies in from California, works with you for six hours, and then you never see that person again. Something that has to be ongoing, and we're proud of the fact that mindfulness, again, is almost three years in the district, we've done a lot of work around it, and the mindfulness instructor is actually a Southside High School graduate, we're very happy about that as well. We do administrative professional development, we, observation look-for's, what that means is when I'm going to an observation in this particular class, what should I be looking for? What's the key element that I should see as this teacher is working with her students? Interator reliability. Anyone know what interator reliability is? I'll make it a little more like interactive. Interator reliability, Bueller, interator reliabul- reliability, interator reliability, is when I go into a room and I see something with a teacher, Dr. Leahy should go in that room and see that same thing with that teacher. I should not walk out and say, wow, this one knocked it out of park, and she goes in and sees that same teacher, oh, this person is struggling a bit. So we should be able to have this reliability between us that we're looking at the same thing and be consistent. And that's quite honestly fair for the teachers as well, right? You have one come in that's got these standards, and another one has other standards, so that's a piece we do on, Dr. Leahy actually helps us run that interator reliability. We have an investigations math program, we're just training our principals on that at the elementary level as well, we talked about how to use the data warehouse, again, sharing best practices is really a great opportunity for our principals and APs. We do review curriculum, we do an item analysis, just like we do with the teachers. And this is something brand-new, as you know, we do have some newer elementary principals, and we have just brought in some new elementary principal monthly meeting. So this is something that we do now on a monthly basis, where we have all five elementary principals come together, and we talk with them about all of these opportunities. Model Schools BOSIS, we work with NASO BOSIS. We have an in-house technology professional developer. Anytime we purchase items from NASO BOSIS, for example, the iPads that we purchase each year for our students for our one-to-one initiative, it comes with a professional developer. That person works throughout the district and all of our buildings, she goes from building to building, scheduling appointments with teachers, she supports all the technology we have from BOSIS. She utilizes things like iPads, Seesaw, Google Classroom, which is a big initiative for us this year, which has replaced e-Backpack, and provides for us during and after-school professional development. We have My Learning Pan, My Learning Plan Professional Development Request Form. If I am a teacher and I want to provide professional development for my colleagues, I can fill out a form for that. Some of the best people to provide professional development are in the classrooms next to you when you are a teacher, or you yourself can be a great resource for your colleagues. So we'll have teachers, we encourage teachers to provide professional development in the district. They fill out this form, they can check off these boxes, is my PD around New York State standards, is it around curriculum integration, is it around building leadership, is it going to be for in-service, is it gonna be during the day, after the day? The staff fill out these forms, and then I approve them. Once I approve them, they go into a queue. You can see I have eighty-three items to approve there, there's not eighty-three right there, it's just a handful, but as I approve each one, they start to tick up, and here's just a quick menu of what you see there. There's a PM one from Rockville Center Schools, PM STEM in the elementary classroom, PM mindfulness in the classroom, you see workshops around music, mindfulness in your classroom, mindfulness, so mindfulness is a pretty big one, Logic Pro, X-Digital Music Production, Fall Conference, Zone Seven, Area, All-State Festival, Creativity Summit. So I have to approve all of these items. The principals approve them, and then I approve them as well. We also have some distance learning we brought in recently. In particular, the distance learning is around our ENL students, it's not easy to get ENL professional development for our teachers. We do have some excellent people on staff, we've been sending people out a lot. This idea came to us two years ago, this is our second year of using this, where online they can learn and receive two hours of professional development, starting to look in that area as well. I get nice graphs from My Learning Plan, you can see these areas of where we're meeting our goals, how much professional development is taking place. Again, a key element, what I do and what this district does, is around professional growth. As of July... As of July 2019, this is why my fingers hurt. As of July 2019, we have 3,809, that's a real number, of professional development requests that need to be approved. So there's a great many people doing professional development throughout the year. You can see there I have a bunch pending, so I better get on that. I talked a little bit about research on professional development. There's an article in a research paper that went out putting professional back-to-teacher professional development, and their findings, I'm happy to report. Teachers want to learn from their colleagues. Being a teacher leader increases one sense of professional efficacy. Districts create structures for teachers to collaborate, to create lasting changes. Professional development shouldn't be one-and-done, as I mentioned before. Teacher leaders get the best results when they build a wide range of relationships. All of this is something that we have structured and built through our professional development plan. We want our teachers delivering professional development because they are the best ones at it. On occasion, yes, we do bring people in or send them out, but developing our own experts is really the way to go. And the research backs that up. We have a professional development budget each year. In total, of conferences and workshops, around $40,000. The P D programs and consultants that we bring into the district throughout the grade levels is about $42,000. And B O S E's professional development, those are all the different things that we send people to, such as Wilson Reading, social-emotional learning, what else do we have? Cultural identification, stress and trauma, E N L, principal leadership. All of those are examples of professional development that we do within and outside of the district. We also get some federal grant funds, Title II A funds, and some of that money is allocated to, for our use with B O S E's. We're part of an excellence and equity consortium, one of the founding districts around that. We have an allocation of about $23,500, which we use towards our P M workshops. They are mostly teacher-facilitated. And St. Agnes gets a piece of that federal grant as well. Those are strictly to be used for professional development. I have a nice little professional development lending library. When we get texts or make purchases, that's up in the office across the street, and people do sign out books and can use them, and we inter-office them for people to, with all different types of professional development ideas. We do survey. Someone asked me one time, how effective is your professional development? We survey every teacher after they do their professional developments. One of the first things I did when I got here 11 years ago, on a scale of, you know, one to five, one being the lowest, five being the highest, how worthy was this? Oh, I can't even read that.
How prepared was the presenter?
How prepared was the presenter? Thank you very much. So you see people felt here that they were prepared. Was this P D what you expected? There's several questions. Was it understandable? And this one really, I felt, was important, that the worst thing I can do to a teacher is at 5:00 on a Thursday in the rain in February, maybe snow, have them sitting there wasting their time. That is unacceptable to me. And so you see that final question there. I felt this professional development opportunity was worthy of my time. That is very important to me, as I consider myself a teacher always, and so I want to hear from our teachers that they feel that they're being, that they are being heard. At the bottom, also, people will take time sometimes, write in responses. I picked two at random. They have to be really nice responses about professional development. Workshop is very valuable. I learned various materials from the break box. The second one says, workshop handouts associated with Century Box. Put to immediate use in my classroom. I will benefit from these tools. Thank you. Again, just examples of some of the things that we do in our survey. I got this from out of nowhere. Just someone sent me an email about our professional developer, Laura Collin, from Model Schools at B O S E's. We're working with Google Classroom. It's new to us. We're working with HyperDocs. It's really a lot going on. We use Discovery Ad as a graphic organizer. There's no way I could have done this without her knowledge and patience. She's helping me untap the power of Google Classroom, which is invaluable to me. Again, I put this in because I was working on this P D when I got this PowerPoint, when I got this, but just speaks to the professionals that we bring in this district and that work with our teachers and the professionals that our teachers are. Lastly, I know this slide looks a little weird. When I showed it to people, they're like, why do you put in a slide like that? This is from Janine Sampino at a conference on a Friday, off somewhere, sends me this and says, look at this. You have to put this in your slide, in your slideshow. And it just, John Hattie is a world-renowned researcher, educational researcher, and he says, we have to focus on the greatest source of variance for our students, which is the teacher. And he says, these things occur once the classroom doors close, and it's not by reorganizing who is in the classroom or how many students are behind those doors. What's most important is who is that teacher and how you professionally develop that teacher. And that's something, again, I'm proud of in this district. We take a lot of time. There's a big budget for it. It's extremely important. I think our teachers see it as worthy of their time as well. And I think I was able to wrap it up. Look at that, record time. Thank you very much. Thank you. I don't know if there are questions from the board or? Do you have a question?
I do.
You want to submit it in writing, or you want to do it now?
No, I'm going to submit it in the microphone. If you, when you have people, you know, putting in requests to you.
Sure.
If you see that there's crossover, do you ever try to encourage teachers to kind of work together or do things in tandem instead of individually?
It's interesting enough, some teachers are almost shy to work with their colleagues in that capacity. So I constantly have, hey, can I do this with this other person? Or someone will say, I want to do this, but I'm not really sure. Oh, yeah, I have this one. Let's put it together and do that. So we do that constantly.
What about working inter schools? So elementary schools, do they work together, so consistency?
Yes, so that P D today, that fourth grade, every school was represented. And when we started with the writing, it's interesting that professional developers said, there's too many people, you know, you have one person from every section of fourth grade, you're going to have 17 people writing curricul, it's too many people. And I said, oh, no, no, no. When we start this writing project, I need buy-in from all of our teachers. I can't walk in and have five of them write it, and the other 12 get handed it at the end of the summer and say, here's your writing curriculum. We need everyone to have a role in that. So we brought everyone together. Once we got on our way, then yes, we were able to bring it down to just, this year is the third year that we're working with fourth grade, so there's a subset of people there. But when we started, I made sure that everybody was there.
Dr. Pilthair, you spoke to, spoke about the Ed Foundation, and they supply grants, and it actually was put into, what is it? I'm out of line. But can you just explain how that happens to our people?
Sure.
To our, to our audience, all right?
Yeah. The Education Foundation is a not-for-profit here in Rockville Center. It's a wonderful organization. I'll say it right, the Rockville Center Education Foundation. And they raise money. They have a big gala each year. This year, it's March 28th. And this year, it honors our superintendent, Dr. William H. Johnson, who's sitting right here. So that group raises money each year and grants, almost, they try to grant all of it back to our district. And teachers can apply for it. For example, we wrote a grant, the kindergarten teacher last year wrote a grant for this Mystery Science program, and now every teacher K through five has access to this online science resource. Again, they raise funds, the Rockville Center Education Foundation. They have a website. It's linked on our website. People can go to their gala or donate, and that money ends up in grants that our teachers write, and they get that money from the Education Foundation.
Thank you, Dr. Pilthair.
Of course.
Also, just following up on how we do professional development, are we, I'm really happy to hear that our elementary teachers are coming, our principals coming together. Are we also looking at when our kids show up at the middle school, if they have needs that we need to go back and look at our elementary school or in the high school, and we need to go back and look, like, you know, from school, you know, from levels to level?
Sure. Earlier this year, we had, social studies is a little bit different now. It's not so much as a timeline as it used to be. It's more around enduring issues, really important issues throughout history. And so we had our middle school teachers meet with our high school teachers right in the boardroom across the street. We had a great half-a-day workshop with them articulating up and down how we're going to introduce this, we're going to do this one issue, then you guys can carry the ball with these other issues, so we're not replicating the work, and so that kids show up. A lot of times, kids like to show up after a summer and say, I never learned, my teacher never taught me any. Any teachers out here, you ever have your students tell you, I never learned that. They never taught me that. So obviously, we know that that's usually not the case. And so this articulation between the middle school and the high school really could help us set up that staircase, so to speak. And I just had a conversation with the fifth-grade E L A teachers about doing more of that with the middle school, with sixth grade. Right now, the guidance counselors from the middle school goes down and meets with teachers, but I was talking about actually having E L A teachers meet with the fifth-grade teachers who were just writing the curriculum. That was on Tuesday.
Okay.
Of course.
Chris, I noticed the Watson Stellar teacher made a comment. Do all the Stellar teachers avail themselves, and do they have opportunities to collaborate as well?
So we have A I S P D, just for A I S teachers. We have Stellar P D, just for, we actually incorporate the middle school and high school librarians there as well, and they have that conversation across the schools and across the grades. Yes, definitely.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Of course. Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to move on to items for discussion. Before we do that, we'd like to have, to read a statement on behalf of the board regarding some of the issues that were raised at the last meeting. As you may know, there have been certain issues that were brought to the attention of the board regarding some aspects of our school district's athletic program, and in particular, the girls' high school soccer program. We've been working on these and other questions through a fact-finding process. During this process, we've heard from a number of stakeholders and thanked those participants. Tonight, we wanted to take the opportunity to address the public on this matter and inform you of the expected course of action we will be taking. Upon review of the current policies regarding outside work by district staff, the school district's administration has recommended to the board, and the board readily agrees, that the policies warrant review and amendment. Specifically, the school district is reviewing amendments to the policies relative to a staff member conducting off-season training with student athletes, as well as outside coaching of teams where our student athletes may be participants. In addition, the board has asked the superintendent to review and improve certain procedures within our athletic department and further educate our coaches across all teams. In particular, the means by which team selections are announced to our student athletes to make sure the method used does not cause embarrassment, and ensuring there is better communication and protocols relative to due process and decision-making for student athletes. The board tonight will not address nor allow for the discussion of specific personnel decisions in this matter, nor can we allow public comment where there is discussion of specific students or parents. As a district, we are fortunate and thankful to have many dedicated and talented student athletes. To those student athletes who felt that they were treated unfairly during the tryouts, selection, and notification process, and during the season, we recognize this may have upset you, and we apologize. To our student athletes and parents, we will continue to work with administration in the oversight of the application of the policies and procedures related to our athletic programs in Rockville Center schools. We are committed to fostering a healthy, competitive, and positive culture in athletics, and feel these considerations will make our programs stronger. And now we can segue into how we're going to affect that change. So we move on to policies, and that's what one of our main responsibilities as board members is to do. And I just would like to say personally, now we have a choice to make, and I really think that the right choice for everyone involved in this is for us to move forward. And I hope that when we say we want to move forward, that you understand we're not looking to sweep the past under the rug, but we take what we've learned and we bring it with us. And this is how we can do that. I've learned from the past couple of weeks that our children are listening and they are watching what we're doing, and I hope that we can set a good example moving forward, and we can take this with us. So I hope that you will be open-minded and listen to how we go through the process of policy, and I'll just explain quickly how we get through it. We do have policies in place for certain things. Some of them have not been looked at for a while, and sometimes we don't know that they're not working properly until something is raised to our attention. So going back to what I said at the last meeting, we want people to come to us. We want people to write us letters and come to meetings and point out things that we need to know. So we would like to revisit a policy that's been out there. The intention of the policy, I think, was good. There may have been a gray area to it, so we're trying to tighten up that language, and that's Policy 6480, tutoring and professional services for a fee remuneration and/or consideration. So we're going to start by looking at this policy. And again, I think what we really realized was that the intention of the original policy was good, maybe was not executed properly, or maybe had too many areas that were a bit gray. So what we're trying to do is kind of put out there what we're expecting from the policy, and we will have to move forward through this process and making sure that that language reflects how the board feels and how the community feels, so that when we go forward, we have something that's in place that represents what we think is the integrity of our programs, our teachers, our staff. So you have to be a little patient with us. We do move through stages, and we're not looking to rush this, but we do want to put it back on the table tonight. So we're going to look at that one first. I think the real goal of this policy has always been, and what we continue to hope for, is that we will not have teachers who are tutoring their students outside. We will not have coaches who will be privately training those students on the outside. So that's the overall goal of what we're looking to do. Well, thank you, Jeff Greenfield. So whether or not the words that we have in place here as a, as a kind of draft capture that, we need to kind of get through it now. So again, I hope you'll be patient with us, and I hope you'll be on board with moving forward with us.
If anybody, there should be a copy of this out on the table in the hallway if anybody wants to look at it and...
So we realize there's a lot of red language on here, so.
And then there'll also be opportunity for the public to comment about the policy when visitors, at your opportunity for visitors.
Yes, thank you. Yes, absolutely. Thank you.
I see some people with that.
Yeah, sure. Okay, so we're going to dig into it, and as John mentioned, we will allow for public comment on the policy, but we are going to do that during the public mic time, okay? So we're just going to start to work through it. So again, what we tried to do was get some language out here that really separated the rules of how we felt about outside tutoring and coaching. We do have a representative from Ingraham &amp; Smith, and we can very well ask our lawyers to help us draft some of this language. And I think as we start to converse about it, that might be an option, that might be very good for us to help get the right words on paper to reflect that. So I'm going to let any board members jump in with any comments, questions, concerns regarding some of the amendments put forward.
I'd just like to make a comment. Liz and I were here when we kind of put coaching into this tutoring policy, and it was a very difficult process. It took us a long time to get where we were, and we didn't quite know how to do it, and it lingered along for all these years.
Well, I think policies are like, policies are like, you try to set up the scaffolding, and, right, it's, there's a, there's a balance, and so, yeah.
But I think a big problem is we try to put tutoring and coaching in the same verbiage.
In the same.
So I would ask that we look at this tonight, but also look to break it. So have a policy, I don't know how we would do it, a specific policy for tutoring, a specific policy for coaching, because the waters get muddied if you're trying to accommodate two completely different entities, I think. I think that's where we came, you know, I know we struggled.
We did, and, and I think when we did, again, just historically, when we did it those years ago, we were also focused a lot on, on music.
Right.
So maybe we really need it. Maybe that's a third. I don't know if that fits in somewhere else, but they are different. They're, they're different. Music, the issue was selection, and coaching falls in that same sort of category, but But it's different. You can't blind... You can't... You can blind select music. You can't blind select coaching. So if we're going to start splitting them, maybe we need to do... Maybe we need to be that specific. This is for teachers and instruction, you know, and this is for coaches, and this is for music teachers, because there's a different structure there.
Jackie or Mr. Powers, does that take us to three separate policies that we would work out, or all fall into the same thing but in different paragraphs?
Yeah, we can actually break it down to three different subdivisions. So when I read through your original policy, 6480, that was adopted in 2002, revised two years later, and then the last revision was 2012. So it's been quite some time since you actually revisited this issue. Knowing what has happened here recently, I think you do need revisions. You know, clearly to break it down between teachers and coaches, now also adding the music provision as well. So what I would say is you keep 6480. I've seen the red policy. There's a lot of red here, but that's a good start. And then we can take it and listen to what are the specifics of music teaching, which I know very little about. I know more about coaching. And how we would have to break it down so that you put your employees and staff members on clear notice. The most important thing with a policy is that it must be clear. And then you get the word out there so that you allow your folks to know, here are the rules that we have to play by. I looked at some of the forms that you have together here as well. I think you also had to have specific forms for those folks as well. It's going to take a little legwork, but I think it's certainly something that you have to do here. Your original policy, 6480, I think you tried to accomplish a lot on one piece of paper, and I think you need to break it down further.
Thank you.
Sure.
Very helpful. Okay, so I think we all agree that would be a good way for us to break it down, and should probably do that in the next iteration. So knowing what we have on paper now, let's kind of maybe dig a little deeper into what it's saying, and is it kind of capturing the intention of what we're looking for? Any questions or concerns?
I guess, in theory, right, a lot of this, we talk about a student who is currently somebody's under somebody. What does that mean? What happens over the summer? What happens off-season?
What happens years in advance of having somebody? We have to talk about what the scope of time is.
Right, right. With coaching, you know, it's... You know, that's different, again, as a teacher than versus a coach.
Dr. Johnson, we had asked you to check with athletics to see if there were multiple possibilities of anybody doing any outside work. We looked at that, right? And we kind of tried to capture good information as we're writing this about who may be affected by a new policy or differently worded policy, correct?
You mean which?
In terms of athletics, you know, any outside? We looked into every different sport, right?
We do, yes, we have every... Yes, we did.
Okay. So one of the things that had come out of that kind of inquiry was the possibility of people doing camps and things like that?
There are a number of networks that exist for various different sports. They vary a little bit by sport. Some involve remuneration of coaches and trainers and people, and others do not. There's a lot of volunteer work that's done in Nassau County with children who are eager to participate and grow up learning a sport. The problem we have, and you brought it up just a little while ago, is how far back do we look? You know, if we have a swimmer, and they've been working with a swimming coach from the time that they've been very young, and this person is connected in some way, at what point in time do we say enough is enough, and we can't allow that to happen? Or do we start right out from the beginning, in that if this is a Rockville Center resident, you cannot, under any circumstance, coach or train the student at any time during their athletic career? It's hard to pick a time. I mean, I don't know... We've looked back, and many of these organizations have very early starts. If you take soccer, or lacrosse, or swimming, these... There are very well-oiled organizations that are connected to these sports, and they start at a very early age. Kids are trained, and parents spend a good deal of money getting them trained. And these kids participate in all kinds of very competitive leagues. Some of them local, some of them travel teams, some of them not so local. We have to be very, very careful, I think, about managing and controlling that network. Let me give you an example. I mean, we have kids who move here, who may have had a trainer or a coach, let's say, when they were in junior high school or middle school, and then move here as a sophomore in high school. And guess what? That person that they worked with is now the coach of our high school team. What do we do in a circumstance like that? You know, when you begin to list all the various possible scenarios, it's almost virtually impossible to capture all of them. I do agree, by the way, as Chris, you were just talking about, a single policy with various subsections. And to the degree that we can, sports is a very unique one. So is music, because music falls, to some extent, within the same type of category. It's just not music, by the way. It's music and the performing arts. They... Kids now participate at very young ages in various dance and theater programs that are regional programs. Some of our staff members may be connected to those. And if so, does that give them an edge in participating in anything that we offer here at Southside? So all I'm saying is that, yes, we've looked into it. It's far more complicated than I think initially we thought when we began examining this, and it extends well beyond just sports alone.
I think one of the other points, just to piggyback on what you're saying, too, is about that selection, because it's one thing to have a history with somebody, but then we really are trying to limit that person's kind of influence in selecting. So like Liz was saying, with music, it's easy. You can have a blind audition. But if there was going to be a tryout, that person should not be participating in the tryout, but should be really alerting somebody that there was... Right? I mean, that that was part of what I think the old policy, and you guys were involved with it, that you tried to do, was to alert that there was a connection, and that so that person would then be able to recuse themselves.
Correct.
And that was kind of worked into this.
Right. The way in which we tried to deal with it in the past was to identify those who might be connected and have a conflict of interest, and either remove them entirely from the process of selection, or as we did in music, create blind selection. And that may be an option that we'll have to take a look at in some sets of circumstances, and to define the conditions under which that might happen.
Okay. Thank you.
One of the statements says, "District parents or students may not be solicited during school hours, on school grounds, or through district resources for tutoring or coaching services." Why would it just be during school hours? Wouldn't it be ever at that point? Why is it limited to just that timeframe? Because it makes sense on school grounds, through district resources. Obviously, you couldn't use your school email to solicit a player, but I think it would be ever. Why would it just be school hours?
Well, why... Right. Wouldn't... Why wouldn't it just be district parents or students may not be solicited?
Solicited, period.
Through district resources or on school grounds, just in general.
Well, you could... You could keep the through district... Well, you'd have to work on those...
Well, you'd have to be using somebody's email, so you just can't... Like, you can't use information... You're trying to prohibit people from using directory information, say, or, you know, to solicit.
I believe within this village and on school property, there are trainers, coaches, and some parent volunteers who will show up with a group of kids and teach them a particular skill at a goal at one of our buildings. I don't know how you restrict that and police that. And all of those times that I'm aware of are outside of the school day. We're able to restrict it during the school day, but once that school day ends, it's very, very difficult for us. And I've seen it on weekends. I've seen it after school. I've seen it in early evenings. I've seen it in a variety of different sports. People will show up with lacrosse sticks here at Southside High School at 6:30 in the evening in June. And I'm not sure who the adult is who might be working with them, or they're just working informally among themselves.
But then it would be district parents or students may not be solicited by district staff.
I think that's the differentiation. I don't think you're referring to district staff.
Right.
It can't be a staff member.
Oh, yeah.
That's the difference.
Maybe solicited.
I don't know. We have to think of the wording of it.
Again, clearly, we're going to have to work on it. Is there anything else we want to raise now? I would make a recommendation, we leave it at stage one.
Yeah, for sure.
And not move it forward at the time?
I think the next part is to break it down to teacher, coaches, music.
Yeah, because they're each unique circumstances, and I think it will be easier than to tackle each separate entity.
Agreed.
I think you're looking at them.
All right, thanks, Chris. Thank you.
I think the teachers will be the easiest, because there's the most history there. And then the more complicated ones will be the coaches and the music folks. But we'll do the best we can to come back with you, to you, with some revisions. Now, what I think I just heard for bullet point number six, which presently reads, "District parents or students may not be solicited during school hours, on school grounds, or through district resources for tutoring and coaching services." I think what I heard is that you're going to strike part of that. You're going to strike during school hours, on school grounds, or through district resources. Now, it should read, "District parents or students may not be solicited by staff members for tutoring or coaching services." That's pretty straightforward, which is you can't have a math teacher saying, "I'm going to teach you," or, you know, "my buddy can teach you, and here's what you have to do in order to achieve that." Same thing with coaching. So I think you can actually simplify the language and make it very clear that this is not something that will be permitted here. Okay, no problem.
Thank you. Thank you.
I do have one other thing. Employee awareness on the second page. The district must notify all employees of amendments made to this policy within one month of adoption. Why do we have to wait a month?
Yeah, I had the same question.
I think they put a time limit on it. I don't think that that should be the goal.
But that's saying that's the goal.
No, it's saying that there's a limitation of...
Why a month? Why shouldn't the staff be...
Just make it be shorter.
If the board approves the policy, why shouldn't the staff be notified right away about it?
We did... Dr. Johnson, didn't we question how that information is given out to staff? And we said that there was an update to a policy that it would... We talked about maybe having Jackie as our district clerk send it out to everybody on the staff. So is that something we're going to be able to do kind of going forward? So make things more immediate?
So what I normally do now is I send it to all principals. There are certain staff that I send it to. And then they would share it with their staff, but I could certainly send it to everybody.
So for a coach, Carol Rosetta would get it, and she would be responsible to send it to her coaches?
Principals, directors, right. That's how we do it now, for all policies, not necessarily just this one. It's every policy that is adopted by the board, that's how it's...
But she's saying going forward, she could just send it directly to every employee.
That's what I would say, because I would argue that we need to ensure that it's getting to the teachers, and that way we know it got to them, and it didn't just go secondhand.
Yeah.
Jackie, do you know if we have that wording in other policies? I've never noticed it, but...
It's just a... It's just the way that I have always done it. It's not in every policy, no.
Right.
That's an important thing to discuss.
We might be able to set up a system where people sign for it as well, that a coach is...
That's what I'm thinking, right?
I think that's important.
That's what I'm thinking, because now you ensure that you got the policy.
At a faculty conference, they can initial that they received the policies that were discussed in that faculty conference.
Correct. That's good. Also, Chris, when we look at policies, do you look at other districts to see how Garden City's doing it, Manhasset's doing it? These are school districts that we compete against, we go against, we go academically against. So I'm wondering, what do their policies look like? And do we take that into account when we're writing our policy?
Sure, you can put them side by side. Many of the policies that I see are from school boards. So you take a look at what school board is recommending, but policies are specific to a district. We happen to represent 56 districts, 58 districts now. And when you do that comparison, they are not mirror images of each other. There's individual home rule that kicks in for whatever issues are presented in a particular district. So they are quite consistent, but they're not mirror images. But we do have the ability to look at other policies for surrounding districts.
That's what I was wondering, just I'd like to see what other people do.
Sure.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, we reached out to other school districts and came up dry.
Meaning?
Either they decided not to share them with us, or they don't have them.
Yeah, we're going to be able to find some of these.
Well, are you saying that they weren't...
No.
Are you saying that they weren't specific to this issue? They're a little gray area, is that what you're saying?
No, there are plenty of policies... Yes, Jeff, I understand about being able to foil anything, and we don't do that regularly with other school districts. They generally cooperate. If we put in a request, they will submit them to us or send them to us. In this particular case, when we sent out a request for policies that govern tutoring, coaching, we found out that there were very few of them that exist within the county of Nassau.
So here's what we can do. We can do a search through New York State. School boards are very helpful. Erie Bosse's has a policy.
Wait, we also go... We belong to an agency up in Erie County. We also made an inquiry with them, and we got nothing.
Okay. So we will conduct a search for you, see if there are any districts out there that have this kind of a policy. I'm sure there are. We'll just have to dig for you. Not a problem.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so any other questions by board members? We, I think, agree we're going to keep it at stage one. We'll leave it where it is, but we'll at least have it on the table now, and we'll look for some revisions. Thank you in advance.
Thank you.
So we'll look at that version the next time, next meeting. So we also have 6480, the form, that I think is also going to need a look over, because we'll have to match up to, again, the intention of the policy. So this would be the form that people would fill out, a teacher, coach would fill out, to let them know what services are being scheduled, location of those services, and having them sign to it that it does not interfere with their regular performance. But again, I think it's almost too intermingled, teaching, coaching. So I almost feel like we need to table this one and kind of bring it along with 6480 in the next round, if you agree, Chris, because...
Sure. And I actually picked up an inconsistency in the form 6480F. It says about halfway down in parentheses, "If services are provided on school grounds, a signature of the Assistant Superintendent for Business is required below." Okay. But then you go to the policy itself, and under bullet point number five, it says tutoring or coaching for compensation may not occur on school grounds at any time. So there's like an inconsistency there. So what we'll have to do is, whatever the ultimate policy is, we'll have to have the form align with it so that there's no discrepancy between them. So this form is definitely not ready to go.
No, it's not ready. Nope. Okay. So we'll let that kind of fall in place. Thank you. Okay, so then we had... Yeah, good.
Chris, any timeline?
When is your next board meeting, sir?
December 11.
December 11.
Okay. I will get it to you by that board meeting.
Thank you.
And that would be continued to be in stage one, Tara? And we would continue to work on it, right?
Exactly, we'll just keep that right where it is.
Thank you.
Okay. So we have in stage two, 6110, and that's the Code of Ethics for all district personnel. This one, we had been digging into a couple of meetings already. We left it at stage one for two times, moved it along last time to stage two, which is where we're at now. Any outstanding questions or comments? Maybe I think it makes sense for Chris to take a peek at this one. Just when you're reviewing 6480, maybe since we're at stage two on this one, you could just take this one and look it over.
Sure.
Mike McGalvin did look at some of it for us as well.
Yeah. In terms of conflicts, codes of ethics, a lot of this is driven by statute, General Municipal law 806. So there's not going to be nearly as many revisions that you can or should make to this one. A lot of it's going to be directly from the statute.
Right.
So, you know, we'll take a look.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any board comments or questions on this one?
The total of $75 per year is, I guess, it's always been a question or a concern of ours, because, I mean, I don't know how... Is it individually... I don't know how you...
I know, we talked about this.
I mean, elementary teachers get gifts for Christmas, Easter, you know, all the holidays, end of year. I don't know what that value, you know, how much that values.
I'd be interested to see what other districts do. Once again, maybe we can look to see what neighboring people are doing around us. Might be worth looking at.
And a lot of times you give a class, well, at least way back when, when I was in, you know, the PTA president at Riverside, it was a class gift. So it valued at $200 sometimes or $150. How does that, how do you distinguish that as $75?
Well, I was up at convention and I went out to dinner at Morton Steakhouse. Is that $75? I had two glasses of wine.
It was probably $150.
You know? I wasn't driving. I'm going to tell someone over 21. So, yeah, so, yeah, there's, there's.
Right.
There's that.
And you didn't use your expense?
I didn't, no, no, no.
It wouldn't have covered it.
It was part of a thing. It's part of a thing, so.
I also think that goes back just to informing staff and reminding them of the policy once we solidify it so that they're aware of it.
They're aware of it, right.
Because oftentimes, even though they do sign off on it in the beginning, it's a good reminder always to remind them.
Agree.
Are there policies that we review with staff on an annual basis? I mean, I know there are policies that we review on an annual basis, but are there any that we?
Can I ask you to keep the background chatter to a minimum, please? I'm having a hard time hearing people up here. Thank you.
Are there any policies we review with staff?
Like superintendent's conference day, that first day in August or September.
Those are done in the buildings. I'd have to specifically talk to the principals about which ones they pull up and talk about.
Because that would be a good time to have them review them, go through them, sign for them. I think that should be a practice that we look to put in place going forward.
Can we, can we get a list, maybe, a combined list of what it is, what goes before everybody on an annual basis? I would, I would, I would hope in coaching that every year.
Sure.
The coaches would take the pertinent, or be, you know, presented the pertinent policies and they would have to initial or sign that they understand and follow the rules.
That would be the expectation.
I think we have to look at how we do all of it and make sure it's.
John, I think one of the goals that we have is to include this. Every year, as you know, coaches are a one-year assignment, so that they come before the board every year. They apply for the position every year. What we want to make sure is that if there are forms and/or policies that apply particularly to the application of coaching, we want to make sure that it's attached to that application each year and that they have an understanding and will sign off on that application, that they have read both the policy and the forms that are attached, and fill out the appropriate forms, so that you can be assured at the time that you appoint them, that they have, that they are fully informed about what the policies are that are currently in effect for whatever their sport is or whatever their, we want to do it for all of the activities as well.
There's no confusion then, there's no, I didn't get that, I didn't understand that. We make our students.
In all honesty, it's a service to them as well, because it's, we want them to know and understand fully at the time that they take on that responsibility, what their obligations are as a coach.
We make our athletes sign that booklet, so I.
Yes, we do.
We should make our employees also understand what's expected.
Agreed.
Because that's what that booklet is for our athletes. This is what is expected of you and it would be good to go.
That's right.
Which makes it even more important, I think, Chris, that we disaggregate the various pieces of this and put it together as separate entities so that we can, in fact, develop a series of guidelines for each of the teacher groups who might be interested in either theater, music, or athletics, to put it together with whatever the application is that we need before we, remember, all of those other appointments are also done on an annual basis as well.
Chris, and I know you said in one form, but wouldn't it be easier to have three separate forms, three separate policies? So there's no, if someone gets, reads it and has to read the athletic part, the musical part.
Well, maybe the form should be separate, but not the policy.
I think it should be one policy with three subdivisions and three separate forms.
Agreed.
That's what I think it should be.
That's what you think. Okay, so we are okay to move that one to stage three? We still have another opportunity to make changes to it at stage three?
Yes.
Yes, okay, to move it forward? All right, Jackie, we're going to move that one forward. Thank you.
I'm confused how we're resolving the $75 issue and Chris is going to look at it.
Sure, there are likely controllers' decisions out there on whether $75 is the aggregate, so I'll have to do that research for you. There are decisions that are accessible. This statute has been around a long time. I would be stunned if that issue has not come up.
I would, you know, I would ask that we don't move it to stage three. Gives us a little more opportunity to look at it, because, I mean, I guess we can leave it in stage three for multiple weeks.
Yeah, we don't have to reprove it next time, so I'm not worried about, it's not that we're going from there to approving it.
Okay.
We still have another opportunity to hold it. And I think what Chris is saying is that that language is a little bit more set than the other, which is, needs a lot of work. Okay, so we'll move that one forward. Okay, so moving on, we realized at the last meeting that there were a lot of questions that people had from, you know, things that had come up at the microphone in the past and people didn't really have any answers about. So we wanted to give some updates to some of the things that had come up more recently so that people didn't feel that there were no answers to some of their questions that maybe they had heard at a meeting in the past. So we wanted to respond to one regarding American Sign Language. There was a parent who had requested more information about that as a foreign language option. The district's been pursuing this as an option and to date has been unsuccessful in finding qualified teachers. But we're currently working with other school districts and Malloy College in an effort to find some qualified part-time staff if we determine that there is enough demand for the course. For students currently interested in ASL, the high school does have an after-school club for all to participate. The district will also be making sure that in CSE meetings that parents fully understand what it means to be exempted from a foreign language. Currently, we have a minimal demand for Spanish and French I in the high school, but however, Level III is offered with additional support for those who are interested. We also had a group of parents write to us and come to the microphone looking for more differentiated instruction, and we thank you for coming forward and, you know, presenting some of your ideas. A group of parents met with Dr. Johnson, Dr. Pelletieri, and Dr. Sampino to explore ways to do more within our school-wide enrichment model. The group will meet one more time in December. The administration will have ongoing meetings with principals and the stellar teachers. We've begun updating our stellar webpages as requested, so they can provide more information. And the focus will extend beyond stellar and will also be incorporated into the classroom. We also had a wide range of parents reach out to us asking about Wilson Space. We thank you to the parents who wrote to us regarding space at Wilson School. The addition of space to a building will require voter approval of a bond. The planning and implementing of a bond is a process, and we understand the concerns and have shared them with the district's architects. As we fill the superintendent position, space at Wilson will be a top item of discussion. We look forward to continuing this conversation with administration and the Wilson community. Lastly, just a quick update on the superintendent search. We had HYA here last time. We had the leadership profile printed. It is on our website if you're interested in looking at it. And we just would like to know that we are underway. They are actively recruiting and now interviewing potential candidates. As a reminder, we have an ongoing confidential search going on, and however, we will share more information when it's available. So those are some outstanding items that we wanted to bring some more information to the table about. And with that, we're going to move on to opportunity for superintendent.
Thank you very much. I only have really three items. I want to really, I just want to thank Brian Zouar and the theatrical program at both the middle school and the high school. I thought they were just fabulous tonight. I was going to make mention of them, but the display that we saw was just fabulous. When we turn to the sports, we have the girls volleyball team going to the States this weekend, and we have the boys football team. In fact, doesn't happen very often, but it's going to the county championship. So my congratulations to both teams. And lastly, it's a little uncomfortable for me to say, but nevertheless, I'm really not even sure how to say this. There's been a lot of rumors and discussion, certainly within the educational community in the last few days and in some parent groups statewide, about who is going to become the next interim commissioner of education. And my name has surfaced as one of those who are being considered. I am on that list of options being considered by the regions. Quite frankly, I'm not sure when they expect to, although I do, actually, I think they're going to make a decision. They have, they do it out every month. They have meetings once a month. They meet in December and then again in January. And it's my understanding that they will make a decision on whatever the choices that they've decided at either the December or the January meeting. So, again, again, it's uncomfortable having to respond to that, but again, when I start getting emails and seeing things and writing or getting phone calls from people who say, "What's going on?", I feel an obligation to at least let the board know and let the community know what exactly is happening. Thank you very much. That's it.
Thank you. Opportunities for board members? Mr. O'Shea?
All right. The students, the, you know, we honor our students occasionally at the board meetings, actually pretty regularly, and it's just a great thing to do. I say it all the time. The academics of a school are the most important, but it's great to see that we are diverse enough that we can fill a need for multiple different groups of students, athletic, drama, chorus, musicians. So, you know, it just makes us more whole. On Dr. Johnson's response, the boys are playing in, at Hofstra on this Friday at 7:00 PM if you wanted to go. And I don't know where the girls, the girls are upstate.
They're upstate New York.
I think they're in Plattsburgh.
No, Glenn's Falls.
Glenn's Falls, okay, I'm sorry about that. So I don't know how many people would go to Glenn's Falls, but Hofstra's not that far. I had the opportunity last night to attend a mental health first aid seminar clinic, thanks to Norrie Leahy brought into the school. It's a great resource for the parents that came that night, and if we have the opportunity to bring it up, I'd encourage everybody to come and, and come and join. It's a great way to understand. And so many things shocked so many people in the room, like, you know, you would never understand, you'd never, you know, you never realize what different disorders are all about and how they come about and, you know, what, you know, what brings them out in people. So it's, it was a great learning experience. We're going to sit in the room tomorrow, the same room again tomorrow for four more hours, so, but it's, it's very educational and, and brought a lot of people together. So it's a great thing. I'd like to wish everybody happy Thanksgiving next week. The holidays are a joyous time for most, but challenging time for some. So I'd like everybody to please be conscious of everybody you come in contact with. Kindness keeps us all happy and healthy. So thank you very much.
This is Dion.
Well, I'm not going to just say everything everybody else said, but, but Dr. Zouar did point to, we talk a lot about social emotional learning, and when John and I first got on this board, that there were so few football players that we, I don't, we questioned whether or not there could be a JV. There was that small. And 11 years later, they're going to the county championships, which is amazing.
It is.
There, back then, the middle school variety show had one boy and about 20 girls, and I think there were 66 students involved in this one this time around, and it was amazing. I mean, what you saw.
On stage.
On stage, yeah. It was amazing.
That doesn't count all the kids behind stage.
So, you know, the play was just, I mean, it's, the kids are involved and it's healthy for them academically and it's healthy for them emotionally. So congratulations to everybody, because that really does take a village. And I'll just also point, we were, a bunch of us were at, came here for the open house, which was about two weeks ago. I got pulled into Model UN where, I don't know, about a dozen kids were sitting around a round table, which was square, and they were each a different country, and they were debating Syria. And I was blown away. I was blown away by what was happening in that room. They told me that last year, they went to Hofstra for a weekend, they sat in a debate where they took, they were each, there were groups of countries and they were during the JFK Bay pics. And it, it just blew me away. It was so impressive. So there was, and again, it was one of those times when you walk through the building, everybody was smiling, no matter what they were doing, everybody was smiling, everybody was engaged. So congratulations. I have other things, but everybody else will say it, and I'll just say what they said too. And happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
Okay, congrats to the Cyclones. Good luck on their playoff run for both the boys' football and the girls' volleyball. Thank you to our student performers. It was a little microcosm of the bigger performances and Broadway lookout. I think we have some young talent on the rise. Happy Thanksgiving to everybody. And one other note, Liz and I were able to attend the community's talk event sponsored by the high school PTA last week. And it was just a really nice opportunity for smaller group discussion based around supporting our students that are making healthy choices in the community and just continuing to look for ways that we can make them feel like the majority. So I think it was an important conversation that will be ongoing, continuing, so happy to be part of that. Thank you. Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
Right, so everything's been said. But it really is, it's awesome to watch the kids come and perform for us and to show us their talents, because that's what this job is all about. And I think as we think about Thanksgiving, we are thankful to the community for constantly questioning and pushing to make sure that we improve as a district and that we stay positive as a district. I am thankful for my board members who work tirelessly and effortlessly to really work to make this district the best that it can be. We listen, we try hard, and we do our best to make things the best for all of our children. I think that's really important to note, and we really thank the administrators, central office, building for all that they do to help us with that. So thank you and happy Thanksgiving.
Just also, we've had such a busy fall season, so we've all been kind of splitting up and doing different things. But one, a couple of other things, I had the joy to attend was the middle school Veterans Day speak, speech that they had. They had lots of parents and family members of staff and of children to come and talk about their experiences in the military. It was really exciting. I would like to thank Dr. Leahy for her service as well. Just such an important topic and love what the middle school do every year with that. John and I yesterday got to go watch the Wilson kids in third, fourth, and fifth grade give their speeches for student council, and it was fun. I mean, they were absolutely adorable. The little ones were telling jokes, the older ones were very serious about what they were going to do. Nobody overpromised anything crazy. Mr. Duffy put a limit on adding, you know, suites and teams and all kinds of things, but they were just so adorable and I loved being with the kids. So also, I thought, Dr. Pelletieri, maybe you could talk just for a moment about the MLK Center and the computers that went over there.
I actually see a couple of our community members who are here that work with MLK Center, I think Amber Travers I see here, and Cindy here as well, who's worked with, Cindy, I just see a hand there, thank you very much, worked with us, with MLK. The board declared some technology equipment obsolete. We were able to then therefore donate it to the MLK Center. The Village also played a role where they were able to put on some, use some of their funds to put computer programs, software programs on those computers that we donated. And so together, we were able to provide MLK with, I believe, five laptops and five desktops. And thanks to their hard work, really put all that together. So really amazing response for that. Thank you very much.
Great job, thank you so much. Thank you for that. And also would like to wish everybody a happy, healthy, safe Thanksgiving. We are going to open the mic now for opportunity for visitors. Please come up and state your name and your address.
Hello. Liz Walter, 28 Dorchester Road. As always, thank you for all your hard work and everyone does a wonderful job. And I know many of the people were here last month when I spoke about American Sign Language, and thank you, I got your letter yesterday, and thank you for following up just now. So my question is, have you advertised a position for American Sign Language anywhere?
Going to have to defer. Defers to Dr. Leahy.
We did a while back, maybe a couple of years ago when it was first brought up, and we just reposted. It'll, if it didn't go out, it'll go out tomorrow. I just discussed it with Kathy Rustano about just posting, just to see if we got anybody. It's, I'm not that hopeful. I hope we get something, but it's more likely it's going to be through contacting other districts that have part-time people.
Okay, that's great. Columbia University has a very robust American Sign Language program. You might want to reach out to them. And I know also, different community members who have asked about this have been getting different information. Some people are saying they heard that there was no interest. Some people are saying that it's been advertised and there's no teacher, you know, a lot of different information. How do you plan on determining if there's interest? I mean, you know, the kids have group, the grade level group me. The kids could just send out a group me and say, you know, who, which kid would like American Sign Language?
So typically, we do that with a little bit more.
Formality.
Yes. You know, the district, the high school, school counselors and administrators, you know, put the feelers out. It's a little bit of, I was just talking to Mr. Murphy about it yesterday, chicken and egg thing. Do we find a teacher and then assess interest, assess interest, and then look for a teacher? So we're kind of working on it together. And also through my consortium. There's a couple of districts that have part-time teachers, I've actually spoken to them. I've actually spoken to them. Not, no luck yet.
Okay.
And I was talking to the SEP leadership as well and, you know, just said, listen, I'm, I'm all ears. If anyone has any leads, let us know.
Okay, thank you. Also, in regards, and I'm sorry, I won't take up too much time.
Don't be sorry.
In regards to the, the Level 1 interest, I, I know, you know, over the years, Level 1 foreign language at the high school has been discussed at curriculum meetings, at PTA meetings, and of course, on RVC Moms, where you get the real deal or whatever. So I know the Gen Ed community and the special ed community is interested in this, whether it be American Sign Language or a Level 1 foreign language option. You also stated in your letter to me that once students are declared foreign language exempt, they choose to maintain the exemption. I, I've reached out to many students or parents of students who are exempt, and I couldn't find one who was ever offered the option to come back into a foreign language program. And I mean, I know that you had said what you would offer is for any students, and you said it was quite successful for students to go into the Level 3 foreign language class. And I, my, my assumption is, most people here are Gen Ed parents. I would guess that most of you probably, after your child took four years or three years or whatever of Spanish, you probably wouldn't say, oh, you know what, switch it, go into Level 3 French, risking your child's GPA. I, I, I would doubt that Gen Ed parents would do that. So, being that there's no special ed support in foreign language classes or in foreign language support classes, I, I don't think that having a special ed student move into a Level 3 foreign language class is a viable option. So, I, I really truly believe Level 1 would be a great option for Gen Ed and special ed students. You know, has any student with an IEP ever gone into a Level 3 foreign language class? You might not know.
I, I, I'm gonna say yes, because I, I put many of students in Level 3 over the years as a school counselor and since. But I just can't say, starting?
So like, like-
Yeah, typically, if someone came from another district-
Right.
-moved in from another state, that happened, you know, relatively frequently.
With an IEP.
I just wanted to make one correction, though. There is support in foreign language classes for students with disabilities in integrated classes.
Oh, I was told there wasn't, but okay.
There is.
Sure, okay.
There's, uh, teaching assistance in those classes at the middle school and the high school level.
Are they special ed certified?
Not necessarily.
Okay.
But there is support. And also, that, that support class that goes along with Spanish 3 is, is pretty robust. It's pretty effective.
I'm, I'm sure it is. I, I don't doubt it is. I just, I, I believe for a special ed student, it's, it's probably, you know, particularly, as I mentioned, a student with a language-based learning disability, to put them in a Level 3 class, having had no prior experience, that would be quite a challenge, I would think. Because I would think for Gen Ed students, it would be a challenge. The other thing is, you stated in the letter that you were going to make sure at the CSE meetings that the parents were aware that this was a very far-reaching decision that is often made at the age of 11. I, I really think it's something that you should have in writing or the parents sign off on or something, because if you've ever been at one of those meetings, it's very overwhelming. There's regulations and assessments and blah, blah, blah. It's overwhelming. And so much stuff goes over your head. So, somebody might miss that information. That, so they're making a decision for their child at the age of 11 that's going to affect them when they go to college, so.
I, I think that's a great suggestion, and I'll make that to Dr. Gudon and Ms. Young. But, uh, the thing about foreign language exemption, which I've been thinking a lot about since a couple of statements have been made, we actually don't, I'm gonna say, push it, you know? As a matter of fact, usually we're, we're in contention with parents that want their children foreign language exempt, where we do everything in our power not to do that, certainly until we really have to. I mean, there are specific disabilities where that we're more prone to suggest it. But, but it's not something that we, we jump to. We truly don't. And there's, there, in fact, I would say the going-in position should be, you know, if there's any doubt whatsoever that you want your child to be able to pursue a course of study that would make them, let's say, more competitive for schools or what other, other concerns you might have about foreign language, is don't make them foreign language exempt. Allow them to be exposed to the language in the middle school, go all the way through, get to the checkpoint exam. And then at that point, frankly, at that point, when they graduate eighth grade, they can earn that one high school credit in foreign language that makes them, you know, makes the, the rest of the credentials much easier to earn. So, for sure, this is not something that the CSE and Rockwell Center pushes in any way, shape, or form.
No, I understand that.
Yeah.
I, I just-
But I, I like your suggestion about trying to create a better, you know, written explanation of the criteria.
Great, thank you.
To have one of our questions answered, though. She asked if somebody is foreign language exempt, are they able to then reverse that decision at some point? What, what's the answer to that?
Always, yes.
Because maybe that should be incorporated in that literature that's handed out, so that people understand not only what it means to elect it, but if there's any change, maybe going forward, if that they want to elect a change, that that's a possibility. Maybe people don't understand that.
I just, and, and yes, I, I think that's a great idea. But I also think that it would be very difficult for a student with a language-based learning disability to move with absolutely no experience into a Level 3 class.
Okay.
So, I, you know, so, so that is something important. And I think, from my math, there's about 20 to 30 kids who don't sit for the, the foreign language regents each year. So my assumption is by that grade, those kids are foreign language exempt, because I'm not sure why they wouldn't sit for the exam. So, although you say it's not a large number, my assumption is by 10th grade, it's probably around 20 or 30.
Well, it could be that they're just not taking foreign language anymore.
Well, don't you, and I, I thought our district makes sure that everybody gets either the advanced designation regents diploma or the basic regents diploma, which would necessitate that exam unless they took the theater-
For sure, mo- most kids continue their studies in foreign language.
Right.
And, and we encourage it for obvious reasons.
Absolutely, yes.
Not the least of which is just being, being able to speak a second language when you're an adult. But, uh, the requirement is, is a credit of foreign language.
Yes.
And there are some students who pursue other areas of study and they stop after, after that. And that could be another, could be another reason why they don't take the checkpoint Bravo exam, proficiency exam.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. It was a little bit of an obstacle course to get up there. My name is Carrie Spatz. I live at 38 Bennett Street, and I'm here to talk to you about the overcrowdedness in Wilson. Before I begin, I would like to thank you for taking the time to hear our concerns. The enrollment continues to rise at Wilson School. In 2015, there were 300 and, there were 380 students. Wilson is currently at 430 students. That is 50 students that came to Wilson School over a four-year period. Presently, there are 11 houses for sale, zoned for the Wilson School, and there are 10 more houses that are under contract. Hewitt enrollment is currently at 465 students. With the difference of 35 students, Hewitt has a much larger building, including rooms for the art, rooms for art, music, band, and orchestra, plus a full-size classroom for guided reading and AIS. More office space, a large gym, which is twice the size of Wilson, to be utilized for various activities. At Wilson, the old art room needed to be converted to a classroom. Mrs. Wetta's room is undersized and can't hold more than 18 students. Wilson hallways are crowded with students working and receiving instruction during the day, and this is distracting for both the students and the teachers. There is not enough office space to service the children. Wilson is the only elementary school where children eat in their classrooms. During inclement weather days, children are in the same room for hours on end without any movement. Wilson is currently graduating a smaller class of 63 students. If lar-, if a larger kindergarten class comes in, the number of enrolled students will be much higher. This would mean that multiple grades with four sections, including a possible split of a current kindergarten and fourth, which are already at the number of 72. Wilson has lost the art room three years ago and is in danger of losing the music room. Why are we waiting for this to happen? Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Johnson, did you wanna respond at all?
We are very much aware of, I don't wanna call it overcrowding at this point, but certainly there's been a growth in the population at Wilson School. I, I think it would be a viable op- option for us to consider how we deal with that during the budget, upcoming budget season. I'm very much aware of the parental concern within the building at this point. The principal has been communicating that to us. And it's been ongoing for the last two years, I believe. So, I, I think quite frankly that we can take a look at, at trends and where we could end up in the next few years. I don't think, you know, we're, I don't know where you went.
I'm right here.
Oh, there you are, okay. I'm looking over here. I thought you went back through the obstacle course, okay. You're, you're welcome to come back to the microphone if you'd like.
Just what she wanted.
You know, it's very brave for people to get up and, and talk like this, who are not accustomed to coming before the night. We certainly appreciate that. And, and our heartfelt thanks to people like yourself who bring to our attention some really difficult issues for us to deal with. I will tell you that, that, let's consider this day one, but I think during the budgeting process, we're gonna have to take a look at ways in which we can deal with this. I, I don't think it's gonna go away, but we can certainly study it a little bit more carefully, and I can be prepared at the next Board of Education meeting to take a look at some of the enrollment trends that we anticipate over the next few years. On the, on the initial numbers that we have right now, the incoming kindergarten for next year, we believe to be three sections. So, we don't have any data that would suggest that that's going to change.
Right.
So, but that doesn't mean that it won't down the road.
The present third grade that is at Wilson School right now is, I believe, looking over the numbers. It's sort of like when the trend started, that Wilson started to become-
Right.
-overcrowded. And I know it's a bunch of parents at Wilson Schools concerned that we don't, we can't wait for a bond. Like, we don't have three to five years. There are, there are tables in the hallway where kids are getting this instruction, and I'm a teacher. So I know that it, the, the teacher can't be as focused as, as they want to be, and the children are probably looking all over the place, like, what else is going on? So it's really just a big issue that needs to get addressed.
Well, this is why I say, I, I, please come back and join us at, during, during the budget season. We begin, the discussions begin in January. What I can certainly do for the Board of Education is go back with Mr. Bartels. We do have enrollment data. We can certainly hone in on Wilson School and take a look at what it might be, certainly over the next five years. All right?
Thank you, Carrie.
Just, Dr. Johnson, we, bringing up a budget time won't, won't really help anything. Won't help the process. It really has to go to a bond process. It's not something we can accomplish with a budget dollar. It needs to be a bond dollar.
Probably. Okay, I, right, probably, yes. In all likelihood. Depends what the solution is.
Dr. Johnson, bringing up a budget time won't really help anything, won't help the process. It really has to go to a bond process. It's not something we can accomplish with a budget dollar. It needs to be a bond dollar.
Probably. Okay. Right, probably, yes. In all likelihood. Depends what the solution is.
May I go from here because the lighting's better?
Nope, we need you right there, mister. Right in the middle. Got to follow the rules. Come on over. That's better. Now people can see you on the video.
Jeff Greenfield, citizen taxpayer, life member of PTA, Uber Court. I'm going to start as a Wilson School graduate for, I think it was 62. I have some ideas for you on this. My first air raid drill was at the Wilson School. We went under our desks during the Russian missile crisis as an air raid drill. And then they decided that wasn't safe, so we went to the basement. Wilson School is very famous. All the Wilson parents, I want you to know this. Alan King became a hit on the Ed Sullivan Show, a comedian Alan King sits deceased. His first routine was "Welcome to Suburbia." He bought a house behind the Wilson School, and he got on Ed Sullivan. He says, "I could tell time from this school. The real estate broker told me my kids are going to this school," and then they got bused to Baldwin. And that was his first routine, "Welcome to Suburbia." Wilson School has a place in my heart. I had the first and second principal in the history of the school, one of my principals, Mrs. Crossshaw, and Mr. McDonald. I remember this debate and discussion many years when the portable classrooms were set upon. And then the fact of the matter was that there was a discussion with Central Synagogue about using some of their space, which may be now available again, as an alternative to a bond issue. Central Synagogue has a declining population congregation. I think it's no secret. Jimmy Gelman is a local resident, is the president of the congregation. You may want to have a discussion with him with that because I've had some discussions with him about a possibility for Malloy College. And years ago, the school district talked about, because of the close proximity, there's an opening in the fence there, or there used to be, or there may still be. And that may be some viable alternative worth exploring at immediate resolution of the problem at a lower cost. I only remember taking to this mic for many years, Larry, talking about full-time kindergarten. By the time we got full-time kindergarten, my kids were in Michigan and Indiana University. So, Larry, keep plugging away. Your father did it for better years in the village. So I want to welcome the district attorney, the school district attorney here. I don't remember a school -- in my 51st year attending school board meetings on and off, they were going to give me a proclamation when my kids graduate from school here, but only if I would never come back. So I declined that. So I welcome you here tonight, and is this a new policy or new expense for the district? You'll be at all our meetings, or it's just tonight?
It's not new policy, just for a special issue that needed to be addressed. It's no additional cost to the community.
Okay, thank you. As citizen taxpayer, I'm obligated to answer that. So with this code of conduct, which I heard about on FAN radio a little bit, unfortunately, not the right reason to make FAN radio. But do we also have a code of conduct for the coaches that they have? Is there a policy on that, coaches' code of conduct?
There's a document that they do, it's like a, kind of like a document that they sign as a coach.
So maybe you want to review that also at this time?
Yeah, we have been looking at it.
Yeah, and add it to your review process because of this era.
It doesn't come here because it's not a policy, just so you know, but we do have that under advisement.
So I wanted to ask the attorney if there's anything that will impact the collective bargaining agreement or with respect to changes on this issue?
Sure. Anytime you implement a policy, it has to be consistent with the provisions of the CBAs. So you have to be mindful of any changes that are made. You sit down with the unions in case it affects their terms and conditions of employment. From what I see here, it's going to be pretty straightforward. So we'll have to sit down with the union, make sure that it coincides with the CBA.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
So for the record and the Herald, which decided to publicize my late arrival at a recent meeting, I arrived here early tonight, and I'm glad I did. The musical presentation was outstanding. So thank you.
Thank you.
The question I had, I wanted to get to a question. I know it would make you feel bad. Have we discussed yet a school bus camera policy with respect to passing school buses?
We did have that conversation at the last meeting. Mr. Bartels did a kind of overview of what they were looking for. We looked at some of the verbiage of it, and we kind of felt that it seemed that we still had an option of whether or not to do it, and we hadn't made any decisions or moved on with that. But we talked about some of the pitfalls of it and challenges of having that implemented here, the distractions to the driver. We had kind of a pretty lengthy conversation about it last time.
My wife failed to report that to me.
She, I don't know if she stayed for that part.
I don't know that she's coming back either.
Okay, well, she's welcome anytime.
You're stuck with me in the future.
Okay, that's fine, too.
But I would encourage you to do that as a parent of a child 20 years ago that was struck by a car and distracted driver in the school zone and in a coma. And nothing's worse than being taken by the Rockville Center Police to NUMC after hearing the call on my fire radio. So I think school safety, not only within the building, is very important, but school safety in the school bus area is equally important, and it's something we should take seriously. The last public work session had a surprise that we allowed the public to speak. So I don't usually go to public work sessions because...
I don't know which one you're talking about.
The last one, where you had the presentation for...
Oh, we would typically open up after a presentation during a public, we use that public work session to have a presentation. And when we do that, we typically will open the mic for questions specifically about the presentation, but not open-mic time for a visitor. We've done that in the past.
So how does a member of the public looking at the agenda know whether the public will be allowed to speak? Is it spur of the moment?
If there's a presentation in there, you can assume that we would open the mic to...
I don't want to assume. I think you should print something in the...
Well, I'm telling you, if you see a presentation, we would open the mic to have you ask questions about that presentation.
Also, did I miss a presentation on cybersecurity and IT in the district after the experience of this summer? Have we had that on the agenda?
We did. We did have a pretty lengthy discussion about that, and we actually just had that pretty recently again, just to give us even a second update, just to let people know where we were at. Dr. Johnson reported that we were still waiting on some historical email, that that had not been fully recoverable, but was not lost to the cybersecurity concern, but more just still coming back, the way that they were building it back and getting it back to us. So that was more recent, but we had done a pretty larger one when it first happened as well.
So did that include a final financial analysis beyond our insurance recovery? What was the expense impact on the school district?
$10,000.
That was it?
On the school district. The insurance company picked up all of the other expense.
So it's capped at $10,000?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. The paper last week had an article about the interim. I know we can't discuss personnel. I'm not discussing personnel. I'm discussing the headline in the Herald, "An Acting Principal." So with respect to that, I just want to know a question, a fiscal question, a payroll question. How long are we going to pay two principals at the Watson School?
I don't believe we're going to be able to answer. That's a personal, it really is a personnel question.
Sure. So when you start to drill down into the numbers, you would really have to do an analysis of the individuals that are involved. So I think this would be the inappropriate forum to do that, sir. When we start to talk about personnel matters with individuals who are on the payroll, I think that would be problematic to discuss it out here.
It's a budget issue.
But then you also start talking about who's going to be in that position for how long and why is the personnel...
No, I didn't ask that.
So that's where you start getting into an area where we really can't tread in a public session like this. So you're right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Then let me ask that question a different way. So we pass a budget, the public passes a budget, you present us a budget. How do we account for budgetarily to have two individuals on the payroll in the same position? Not saying it's that school, where I read in the Herald about that, but just any place in this district. Where's this money coming from?
Mr. Bartels, you want to answer that one?
Each year, we build into the budget various contingencies for different things, for transportation, for special education costs, for some personnel costs. So we do have some additional funds in there within the budget, specifically in some of our personnel lines.
So we have money?
Yes.
I was getting worried, we're going to get this money. Okay, I have to talk about one other personnel issue that isn't really a personnel issue because somebody announced today what I had heard and confirmed about consideration for the interim or permanent, in my mind, at Commissioner of Education. And Dr. Jay, I strongly endorse that. It would be Rockville Center's loss to New York State's gain. I'd be happy to revise my T-shirt and wear it at the Regents meeting in December if you think that would help the cause and make the difference. I could reprint that in a different way, and I'm sure the Regents would appreciate it, especially my friend Roger Tillis. So good luck to you on that, and thank you. Thank you, good night.
Thank you.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
Happy Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Erica Messier, 493 Rose Lane. Similar to Wilson, covert school is also about to be busting at its seams. Like Wilson, we have no art room. It's currently a classroom. We also have no music room. All of our music students practice on the stage, which, if you've seen the stage, is also, has all of those brand-new metal crates that house all of our art supplies and musical instruments. So the actual amount of room that they have is quite small for the amount of students that might be on the stage with instruments, with stands, trying to practice their music. Our gym is also our cafeteria, so we don't have separate space for those two things. Our guided reading and math also takes place in the hallways, and the hallways are pretty narrow. I don't know how they compare to other schools, but as an adult, I can't really imagine there's more than about six or seven feet between the edge of those guided reading tables, especially when they're pushed out with students sitting in them to the other side of the hallway. So if there was an emergency, I think it would be very interesting to see how that school evacuated, especially when 70% of your classrooms are in one hallway, because it's a semi U-shaped building. A lot of our support staff, like our social worker, guidance counselors, special education teachers, share a very, very small office. When you have the amount of students who may need to see those professionals, I'm not sure how they accommodate seeing students if they're all sharing like a 10-by-10 office space. Our kindergarten is currently at 50, so it's two sections. So if one more student moves in, that will split to three next year. I understand our incoming kindergarten is small, but those numbers change. So it doesn't look like our building setup will change for next year. It will still be at capacity. I'm also curious about, and this, I guess, is a question more so than a comment, is about the classrooms themselves. Like Wilson, they seem small to accommodate up to 25 students, and the furniture, to be quite honest, is antiquated. When you're talking about kindergarten, first, second grade students, and you're teaching them to read, to have them sit at a desk to learn to read seems a little bit ridiculous. When I sit down to read a book, I don't sit at a desk and read a book. I sit in a chair, a couch. I'm interested to know if flexible seating is an initiative in the district, and if so, where you're at with that.
Robert, do principals have the option at their, especially around their budget times, to take a look at sorts of things that they might need to make their learning environments better?
Yes.
Have the opportunity to put in budget requests? Some of what you're saying sounds like it's building level and that we should maybe have, you know, the principals talking about these things, about maybe things that they might need to make them better. Some of them are more facility-related, like you're saying about hallways being crowded. I did notice that myself when I went there last year. I did have covert on my, was what I was alluding to earlier. So I know what you're saying. Sometimes the buildings feel a bit crowded when they're being used, and that's why people need to see them in action. But I think some of what you're saying can probably be escalated to the principal and see if there are some things he might be willing to put in for and rearrange in terms of furniture or reading areas or those types of things.
And that would be great, too, but a lot of times with the flexible seating, there's also professional development that has to go along with that. So like, as a teacher, I could buy different types of seats for my students. It doesn't mean that I know how to use them appropriately, and if I'm buying them for a fifth grader who's never used them before, they're not going to know how to use them appropriately. So I think in general, it's rolled out over a few years, starting at your lower levels, teaching kids and teachers how to use the flex seating. So it's not just, I have a couch in my classroom and the kids are going to fight over it. So I guess it kind of goes along to the professional development, like if it is an initiative or if it would just be, maybe we could buy some couches and that would be, you know what I'm saying?
Well, they could talk about it at the principal meeting, maybe, and then Chris is in those meetings.
Yeah.
And Robert's there as well, and it kind of encompasses all of these things. Maybe that's the place that they could have this conversation across all the elementary schools, and then Chris could kind of put in his professional development hat.
Certainly, if that's a, did all the mics go?
I know, I feel like they got quiet. I feel like they got quiet.
Batteries are dying.
Yeah. I think they're tired of us already.
That's great. So the school, we build an action plan around that to make sure that we get it in.
So it's current... So then, just from my understanding, so it's currently not a vision, not...
No, I wouldn't say that. Some teachers have written grants actually to the Education Foundation, the Calendula at Covert School, had some, for example. So it's something that we started to look at.
I thought it was at Watson?
At Watson School. We made it available as well to two principals. It's something that we can coordinate more around.
Okay, great. I just have one other question. I'm sorry to take so much time. I'm going back to the professional development with differentiated instruction. I was wondering if you could speak a little bit more to the type of professional development that teachers get on differentiated instruction?
Sure. We do differentiated instruction. We discuss differentiated instruction and present on it in our new teacher initiative, where teachers first come to the district, and we talk essentially about the Rockville Center way of making sure that we're not just... We're not shooting at the middle and hoping we're getting high students and low students. That we are aiming at all of our students where they are. NWA plays into that. We can look at some of the results that the students have and target instruction, target groups. And we also do, we have a, actually, in the talks now with Mr. Duffy, who is a principal at Wilson, really an expert on differentiation, talk about using him a little bit more with our teachers as we revisit this. Again, part of this bigger conversation that we're having with parents in the community. In the past, we did something with Mr. Raymar up at Covert School. That's something that's going to grow into probably what Mr. Duffy does or will ask him to do as part of our conversation. And we've spoken with him about that, Dr. Johnson. I visited him at Wilson School recently. We send people out to BOSI's who do professional development around differential instruction as well. It's really, again, when we have our conversations at our grade level, it's a basic tenet. We have to get that right. We have to continue to work at that, and that's something that we're doing.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
[inaudible]
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 Hi, I'm Dana Greenberg. I'm from 463 Coleridge Road. I'm a little nervous, I've never been here before or spoken, so excuse me. I don't know if this is okay, but when you had the discussion earlier amongst yourselves about 6480, and I know you're all going to be working on that, and I appreciate your hard work on that, is it okay if I offer three suggestions or points with regard to that for you to decide?
Yes, please.
Please.
Okay. Dr. Donson, you made a valid point when you talked about the fact that this is a very complex issue, and that it's hard to kind of figure out the catch-all for it. I appreciated your point that one end of the spectrum, a child could move to this district from somewhere else, and by coincidence have been coached by somebody. And would that be a problem then? Would the coach not be allowed to coach them and whatnot? And I do realize that that kind of extreme circumstance could happen. So what I'd like to suggest when coming up with the policy is that you just have to take what is reasonable and more likely into account. Obviously, we cannot catch every single situation. But I think it would be reasonable to say that a coach should not privately train anybody from this district. I think coaches are entitled to supplement their income using their talents, so I think that's great. But if their primary job is for Rockville Center schools, I think they should not train privately children from Rockville Center schools. And I think it would be reasonable to expect that families would be willing to travel 20 or 30 minutes from here for their child to be in a private program with somebody they happen to know is a coach in their district, because what a great advantage to have. So I would suggest that coaches be told, if you're going to privately coach, it has to be outside of a certain radius. It has to be outside of what would be reasonable for people from the community to be taking their children to. So go to the North Shore, go 30, 40, 50 minutes away, and coach away privately if you want to. But that really dramatically would decrease the likelihood that a coach would be privately training somebody who would then be a part of their school. That's one suggestion. The other thing I wanted to ask about was that I know you're talking about having one policy, three different subsections, and then three different forms. And that a coach would be told that they cannot coach children from this district. If they, if for some reason they would be privately, they have to fill out this form. My question is, is simply filling out the form going to be okay and acceptable? And that that's just a formality, and that therefore this would be able to continue? Because I think it would have to be in the policy or in the forms, that it would have to be an extreme circumstance, like your child happened to have been coached in swimming.
Right. I think that's what the form is intended for.
Yeah, okay.
Because as we were saying earlier, I think that that's where the grayness was of the old policy. It wasn't clear if it was just that you had to report it, and then you were able to do it, or that you weren't able to do it and you had to report it. So I think the form is supposed to be, "I want you to know I had this family in my class in whatever circumstance it was, and now this is happening." So the form-
So therefore, it would not be acceptable to say, "I want you to know that I have this family in a travel team, and-"
Right. It shouldn't be undoing the policy. It should be an information vehicle for whatever we might not know.
Okay.
Okay?
Great.
The policy will be clear that it shouldn't be done.
Yes.
Okay.
That's why it needs to be reworked, but yes.
Right, that's why we're reworking it, because it needs to be clear or crystal.
Great. Lastly, I remain hopeful for future cohorts of children coming up, that once we tighten this up and fix this up, we will see improvements to that. Personally, I'm speaking as a parent of a child who's currently in the system, currently, I don't want to say victimized, but currently had to be part of the experience of what shouldn't have happened and what shouldn't have gone on. And so I wonder if the board could consider what we could do in the short term for the kids who are currently in middle school and high school, and who would like to see some improvement now for their situation. I made a suggestion in my letter, and I just would like to reiterate it to you tonight, that you consider, at least for the next few years, bringing in an independent panel to do tryouts for sports. Of course, I'm selfishly thinking of girls soccer, but why not for everything? I think that because there's a certain amount of mistrust on behalf of community members, because of things that have gone on, I think that it would help to gain some of that trust back, and help to level the playing field and be more fair if completely independent people. I even think it might be a good idea to put into place in the future. You suggested reaching out to other school districts to see what they're doing. I think I also work in another school district, and I can tell you that I think that this is not just a Rockville Center problem. And I think everybody is trying to kind of figure out how to make these things better, so perhaps people would be interested in swapping. Let's get some coaches from Westchester to be willing to come down for our tryouts, and we'll trade you and send our coaches up to Westchester for your tryouts, as a, you know, way to help each other out, so that nobody knows the players involved, and everything becomes a little bit more fair and independent and objective. I say Westchester because it's a very close network on Long Island, so to simply go to a neighboring town doesn't necessarily take care of that problem. And that's it, those are the only suggestions I wanted to make while you can say change.
Thank you so much.
Good evening. Salvatore Romanello, 128 Damod. So I do have some prepared remarks, but I want to start off with the policy change. This is really simple, it's not hard at all. If you are a teacher in this district, and you derive income from outside training, you should not coach a team in that sport, period. That's all you have to do, and it's solid. To have an independent panel come in and do tryouts, that doesn't make any sense. Coaches should take whoever they want, whether it's the best person or the worst person. They need to have that ability. But what you need to do is get rid of the appearance of impropriety. So if you are a teacher, and you draw income from this district, you are a public servant, okay? You should not derive any outside income from an organization where you might have some say over whether that child makes the team. Fundamentally, that is the problem. We all know, there's no gray area in that whole policy, it's very clear. You should not be coaching, taking money from kids that you are going to coach, period, the end, okay? That's simple. I want to start off with why people have so many problems. It's retaliation, very hard to prove. There were discussions here, but the way I was treated, I'm not going to talk about personnel, other than the board and the administration generally. We filed a letter. We submitted it to the administration on August 30. It was, the substance were potential conflicts in the girls' soccer program. We didn't ask for a new tryout, we didn't ask for the composition of the team to change, we didn't even question the results. What we asked for was, we asked for disclosure and transparency. It's three months later. On October 16th, we received a letter from the Board of Education asking us to show up on October 21st, five days later. The 16th was a Wednesday. We were told to show up five days later. That letter came in after 6:00 on a Wednesday. We were asked to submit additional materials if we had them. We spent the evening writing a letter back to the Board of Education, so they could get it on Thursday. We asked, the first question we asked was, what was the decision that we were appealing from? We had no written piece of paper. I went into a meeting with the district's council, Mr. Powers's partner, and he started talking to me and saying his decision was that he reviewed papers, and that the tryout results wouldn't change. And I stopped him, and I said, "That's great." I didn't contest any of that. I'm here because I want disclosure and transparency. And that's it, we got no other information from the district. On the 17th, as I said, we sent in a letter. We asked, what was the decision of the board? And we also asked for an extension of time to put together materials for the board to look at. On Friday at 5:00, we got a response. And the response was as follows. "With regards to the season's soccer tryouts, the superintendent of schools does not intend to alter the results." That's great, but I didn't ask for the results to be altered, so I'm not sure, we're ships passing in the night here. We want transparency and disclosure, and you're telling me that, you're giving me a decision on an issue I didn't raise. We also asked for an extension. Now, this is Friday, the hearing is Monday. I have never heard of a denial of an extension on that short period of time. This is what we were told. "The times for the meetings have been already established, please let us know if you will be willing to attend your scheduled time on Monday, October 21st." So I spent my weekend doing this. You've already, we put together a brief with actual evidence. You've chosen to ignore that evidence. I don't need to get into any of that. I just want the community to know what you're up against if you take on the administration on any issue, and you have to go before this board. Due process mandated that I get more than a weekend to put together my papers. Thankfully, I've been doing this for 25 years, so I could do it, because I'm an attorney. But what about people who don't have the means to do that? They can never be heard, they could never put together these papers. And so the issue here, it's not so much a soccer issue anymore, the issue is the Board of Education and the lack of transparency. Where I really got ticked off, when I got this letter. And it wasn't because you, the Board of Education, on November 8th said to me that you wouldn't order a new fact-finding. I assumed that was going to be the case. What ticked me off was your apology. The apology was to the students involved who feel they were treated unfairly during the tryouts. Do you really believe it's how the students felt? If they felt they were treated unfairly? You know they were treated unfairly, because, well, I'll tell you why. You're changing a policy, because that's a big issue. You also are changing the method in which these girls were told that they didn't make the team. So it's no longer, hey, a varsity player who gets cut from JV gets an envelope, and it says, "Congratulations on making the JV," and then you walk to the parking lot to meet your JV teammates. Well, someone made that decision, there were adults in charge, and as far as I know, those adults are still in charge. To the community, I want to thank the people who have supported us. We've gotten so many emails, statements, letters, people had the courage to write to this board. The letters, I read them, they were heartbreaking. They were much worse than what my daughter had to go through, and than what other kids had to go through. I am sure you were impacted by those letters, because you believe in the community and the people of this community. But you've sat here, and we hide behind personnel and everything else, and we can't tell you about the facts that we put together here. We're not allowed to let the public know about that. We need a board that's committed to transparency. Many of you ran on that very issue. That was your platform, transparency. There is none with respect to what happened during this process. Thank you.
Well, that's a hard act to follow. I'm Karen Parker, 37, Suthard. I have two kids who graduated from Southside, and I currently have an eighth grader. And I'm also the Booster Club president. So supporting the athletes at Southside is a really important cause for me. And between all my kids, they played multiple sports at Southside. And even, my daughter even played on the Southside soccer team. And my truth from that era is a little different from a lot of the things I've been hearing. And you know, she didn't make the team her freshman year, and a lot of people believe she should have. And for us, that was life. Because sometimes you make the team, and sometimes you don't. Sometimes you deserve to, and you slip through the cracks. And sometimes you don't get the recognition you deserve. But there's a fine line between sour grapes over a lack of recognition, and a conflict of interest, and, you know, getting a special treatment that you don't deserve. So at any rate, she played JV that freshman year, and she tried out again the next year, and she made the team. And my children have also played on many travel teams, so I have a lot of experience with that as well. You know, you start to play on a travel team as a kid, because you love that sport, and you just want more of it. So you play, and you improve your skills, and then eventually, if your aspirations are to go on to college and play that sport, that travel team is a showcase for college recruiting. And I can tell you from my experience, there is no inherent conflict of interest with a travel team coach and their players. I'm not going to rehash the details of what happened with the soccer team, because I don't feel that's necessary. It's been investigated. But my frustration is that the perception in the community was based on a narrative that was driven by half-truths, and in many cases outright lies. And this really matters to me, because athletics matter to me. I know what kids learn from athletics. They learn discipline, and determination, and teamwork, and resilience, and respect. Leaders are born on the athletic fields, and I know this to be true. So what I really hope comes out of this is something positive for the kids, because that's really why we're here, that's why all of you guys spend all this time, you know, working so hard, when you have regular jobs, and you come and you spend all these hours doing this. So I hope that we can really assess this policy. I appreciate that you're reviewing it. My frustration is the impetus to review it. But if you are going to review it, my knee-jerk reaction to what you're doing is that you're going to make it very difficult for anyone other than a teacher in this building, really, to be one of our coaches. And if you are restricting so tightly their ability to coach on an outside travel team, you're also eliminating some really qualified candidates for coaching positions at our school. So basically, I also understand and agree with the other person who came and spoke, you know, why not have a neutral evaluator? There's nothing wrong with that. It's done all the time. But I think too, you know, being kind of impressed with the drama presentation, and the things that Chris was saying, and the quote about how, you know, all kids need great teachers, they deserve great teachers. I think all athletes deserve great coaches. And I think we really need to learn from this, move on, and we need to create a culture in our athletic department where we want the very best coaches that we can possibly get. And I think we need to support those coaches. And I think we need clearly defined roles within our athletic director, our Board of Education, and our superintendent, especially when we're getting a new superintendent. We need to know where the buck stops, and there needs to be a real accountability for when a ball is dropped. I think the parents need to know where they should go. I think they need to know what the board can and cannot do, and what they can and cannot say, and what they can and cannot share. And mostly, I think that we need to look at this policy and make sure it's full of specific guidelines for any outside coaching, tutoring, or training. And there need to be timelines for reporting any kind of outside coaching. And I hope that we will move ahead, and we will not lose sight of what's most important, and that's our student-athletes.
Thank you.
I'm Judith Maritz. I'm on 91 Muirfield Road, and I'm a Wilson parent as well. I know that we all come up here and we say, but I'm interested in hearing from all of you, just because this was an issue for the neighbors on Muirfield Road 10 years ago. And now it's an issue again, and the Wilson parents have been here for four straight years. Especially the third grade parents, because that 2011 birth year is huge in the district, in all the buildings. So, when they move on, that's going to be another issue for middle school and high school. But I am interested in hearing, have there been any discussions about this project moving forward? Because we've had, been here for four years. So when you said before, oh, is this a bond issue, or is this a budget issue, whatever, I feel like those things are things that should have already been discussed and that we should be further along in the process. So that's what I would just like, some information about, where are we in this process? Because is this going to be something that benefits my children who are in first and third grade now? Or is this not even a possibility? But I'd like it to be, whether it's for my children or for the future. But because Wilson parents have been here for four years, and now the Covert parents are coming up too in the last two, three years as well, I'd like to hear from all of you, what are the discussions that have been had? Are there plans? Are there, what is the budgetary concern? Things like that.
Robert, we do have some architectural plans drawn for every school, right? We had gone to the architects with issues that we had at each building.
Yes.
Okay, so.
Yeah, so we did do those. We had done, we had done a number of them a number of years ago for the last bond. We've, which did include Wilson, and the decision was not to include them in, in that last bond as far as addition. We have had the architects look at it again recently. They've put together some additional plans, very preliminary, haven't gone into any detail. And the estimates, depending on, you know, what we would do, would be somewhere between $6 and $10 million for, depending on the size of the addition. And that is not really something we could handle within, you know, one regular budget. That's why it would require a bond issue, and would require, you know, going through the State Education Department, getting the plans and specs drawn up and approved by the state, bidding it out, and then starting the work. So that's, that's the problem with the timeline. But we have, we have looked at that.
How long has this been going on, though? Like, where are we exactly in the process? Because like I said, we've been here for four years and longer.
I think the population surged after the last bond closed. I wasn't here then. Liz and John were involved. They would know more about the actual bond process than I would. But I know that it is a process, and it does take years to do. And I just saw that Oceanside's bond had failed, and, you know, it's hard. Sometimes voters don't always go for bonds. So you have to make a bond really strong, right? You have to build up behind it so that you're not looking to put one thing versus another or make one area of the district feel that it's benefiting most from the bond. So that's what goes into a lot of the, the planning process of the bond. It's not just about the money or the, everything else. But you have to put up a good bond, because the voters can vote it down, and then you could just be right behind the eight ball right again. So I think what Robert's saying is that, you know, they had that kind of put into place the last, and they did look at all the buildings when they put the bond together. At that time, the population had not surged, so it wasn't that anybody didn't consider Wilson, but I think it didn't make it in the last one because of the needs of the time. Since then, Wilson's needs have, seemed to obviously change. When it comes to lunch and things, I would be interested to hear what the principal has to say, if there's anything we can do about that. But for actual space, I think we're doing what we can do in the, in the meanwhile, which is get those plans drawn for not only Wilson but other schools. Because if we were to put up a bond, we would have to put up a strong bond so that it would pass. And it would be hard to pass a bond off of the needs of one building. I think it would be for, you know, prudent for us to look across the district and see what's needed. Is, I mean, again, I wasn't involved in the last bond, but I'm assuming that, that is part of the process, is looking across the district as a whole, and we want to make sure it would be successful. So, might not feel like there's a lot being done since the last time the bond passed. How many years is it now? Is it five?
It's 2006.
13.
13?
13.
Okay, so six years. So, the conversation is definitely ongoing. We are going through a transition for superintendency as well, so that puts us a little bit in a strange predicament, because a new superintendent might have some ideas that we'd like to bring to the table across the district as well, whether it be on construction or anything like that. So, we, we are having these conversations, but I don't think that we are ready to put up a bond at this exact time, if I'm being, you know, and I think that we've kind of answered that with the, people had written us to Wilson that it is a process. We weren't looking to enter that bond process right now, today, but it wouldn't be something we would say no to for the future. We just have to do this due diligence to be able to put up a good bond.
I do understand that. I guess it's just a little difficult that we've been, and like I said, this was an issue, a legitimate concern 10 years ago when I first moved on Muirfield. There was a boom at that time, and there were many parents who did that, and they came here for a couple of years. So, I feel like it's not even just like the last four years that we've been here, but it's been a four-year process that, I guess I'm hoping that we would be further along in the process.
I understand. You do have a different principal now, though, too, that you did then, and they have different visions as well. So, I'm not sure exactly what Mr. Recupero's feeling was at the time, but you do have a new principal now. I would hope that if we were going to move forward, that might influence, and being, you know, an advocate for some of the more recent changes that have happened that maybe had, maybe kind of had been flowed over the years, and maybe Mr. Recupero's input at that time did not necessitate the need for the space at that time. Again, I wasn't involved in it, but you do have a principal now that I think is advocating for some, some improvements in the building.
And regardless of what his personal mission is or what he's advocating for, there is a need, right?
Yeah.
And I think we've all discussed, acknowledged that. And I think that, I just would like to.
We hear you.
Further along in the process.
No, we hear you. We do. Yeah, thank you. Thank you.
No one else just wanted to follow? Just yes. No, not really, John. So, I listened to all the debate and heard all the debate on the sports. So the question I asked, well, you had the school attorney come here tonight. Where's the athletic director? Why don't you have the athletic director come to hear from the customer?
She is, she's traveling right now, so I will say that she can't come tonight.
Well, let's have her come to the next meeting.
Okay.
I think, my father taught me it's important to talk to the customer. It's important to hear from the customer. I think the athletic director needs to hear from the customer, i.e. the taxpayers.
There you go.
Next is, on the bond issue, please don't use Oceanside as a benchmark. This, it degrades this community. This community has never turned down a budget or a bond issue in recent history.
Okay, wait. False facts, man. False facts. Got to call you.
I did, let me finish. That was properly put together. I did. You, you, you just, that was.
Good try, Jeff. Good try.
No, that was substantiated. I, I know, there's a little history of Rockville Center that'll be in tomorrow's newspaper that's a little ugly also, that I ran for the school board over in 1977, and they weren't listening at that time. But I don't want to go there either. But if the budget, like you said, is properly constructed, this community backs it. If the budget, also, a case is made with respect to the runoff of the debt service. I think that's an important factor, that we should maybe have a follow-up and should be told where we stand with the debt service, what, when the debt service expires. We used to have that as part of the budget presentation.
We do. We still do.
Yeah, but maybe sooner than that, because we may have some needs in advance of the bond issue, a little refresher course on the debt service for the last and other bond issues that have run off in the past.
Okay.
But give a little credit to the community and don't compare it to Oceanside.
I wasn't comparing. I was saying, it was reinforcing what you're saying about putting up a good bond.
Okay.
And I just, I said, if I, if you don't mind, I was here when a bond went down. It is a really, not a very good feeling. It is, I mean, it's, it's a lot of work, and it, it makes you question whether your budget's going to go down, and it's that much more work to put it back up.
We had a better product afterwards.
Well, we also learned that.
We learned.
The community at large, unfortunately, won't support work at one school alone. They, you know, they, they'll support work at all the schools. So that was a lesson we learned, that we need to include more than just one school in a bond.
I'm sure we enforce what the president said, that if it's, you spread it around enough, Congress knows how to do that when they, you know, really want to work. And, and also, the county legislature's done that from time to time. When they distribute the money through all the districts, they get things done. Thank you.
I guess that's one quick follow-up, too. I'm really sorry.
I guess this is more to administration. So hypothetically speaking, at Wilson or Covert, if we have a first grade split to three and an incoming kindergarten of three, where are you putting that class? Like, where do those kids go if you don't have enough classrooms for them?
There, there still is a classroom on the second floor, as you know, that's being used for musical. We've gone through uneven splits there before. So I'm, I'm not sure, I'm not sure the numbers that we would be talking about, we're not anticipating that happening.
I know you're not anticipating it, but what if? I mean, like, anything literally could happen. So you would essentially have two classes sharing a classroom upstairs?
No.
If it's a split?
No, an uneven split means that if you, instead of having three sections, have four, one of those four sections, let's say it has 15 kids in it, put in a smaller room. So there are two rooms that are small. One is the art room and the other is the music room.
The art room changes.
Pardon me?
We converted the art room to a classroom.
I understand that. But upstairs, on the second floor, there is still the music room that is still available.
No, music room is the auditorium.
Oh, at Covert?
At Covert. Where would you put them? Every classroom is used. The majority of the classrooms.
We have to take a look at what? No, we have to take a look at the, the programs that we have housed within the building.
So like the core program?
Correct.
Okay.
All right.
Hi, good evening. Susan McCassey, and I live at 17 Andover Road. I was not planning on speaking, but when I heard about Wilson and the overcrowding and Covert and the overcrowding, my four children, my oldest is 22 now, so he, he's been out of Wilson for 12 years, and it's not new. I have been hearing about the overcrowding while my kids were at Wilson, and I always heard how it would come back, that enrollment was going down. And clearly, that does not seem to be the case. And I, I just couldn't sit here and, and not say anything that I do urge you to try and, and not have it go for that much longer. I don't know if maybe a kindergarten center would relieve some of the overcrowding, and if it's something that parents would be open to having. So I just wanted to just let you know that there, this issue, it really has been going on for a long time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I just wanted to.
It's the comeback that's happening.
I just want to say one more thing. I, I want to, like, mull over this, this policy, and I'm just going to ask, like, should I bring it to the Booster Club? And is that something we should be discussing? And like, do you want input like that from, from us? Okay.
I would suggest letting, since we're keeping it stage one and we're, we're recognizing that it still needs some, some good work.
It does.
Maybe after the next iteration, taking it to the Booster Club, so you're giving it a better go.
Yeah.
I think, because we still have to work on this more.
That would be kind of like the biggest.
But I think, bring it there, and then have people, again, we hope people will come, even you as the representative, as the president of the Booster Club, if you would like to do that and bring back.
Just to get some other ideas and just a few that.
Or even respond to us an email with comments. But it could be 100% different at the next meeting.
Right.
So I wouldn't, I wouldn't work on what's there for now. I would wait to get a revised first.
Thank you. Thanks for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Anything else? Yeah? Okay. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes from the public work session, November 6, 2019?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Can I have a motion to approve the financial reports as listed?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Can I have a motion to receive, to approve receipt of financial reports as listed?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Can I have a motion to approve items for action A through E plus the addendum?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Can I have a motion to retire into an executive session to discuss specific personnel contractual and litigation matters?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Okay.
Aye.
Bridge.